Just like this, Harriet did all this, working five days a week, 24 hours a day, for almost a year. But now Harriet is tired and needs a rest.
We're saying goodbye to Harriet. It's been a fantastic year for metro transportation and this transportation revolution.
We're going to retire Harriet. She's done her job and she's done a fabulous job.
The farewell party and the Harriet cake may signal the end of Harriet's tunneling days. But construction work has now hit full swing all along the line that will connect Angelino's to South LA and eventually to LAX. The 96th Street Station, which will connect the airport through a people mover, is now in the design phase.
What comes along with it is job opportunities, in addition to the improvement of the environment. So it's all good.
But I think it does bring about a renaissance and increases accessibility for people in the community to the entire system.
There will soon be a day when the growing metro rail system will allow us to travel this train from LAX to Limerick Park, to Santa Monica, to Long Beach, to Pasadena, and to Azusa. We will have an alternative to driving.
Metro officials also have solutions and help for small businesses along the rail line.
If you're a small business out there listening, impacted by construction on this project, contact Metro immediately. We know that it is worth the hassle and we will all benefit at the end.
So for now, goodbye to Harriet and hello to LA's newest metro rail line. It is set to be completed in fall of 2019. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The Crenshaw LAX Line will also serve as a connector between the Expo Line and the Green Line. Well, it's the first boarding school in downtown LA that encourages young students from across the world to pursue their dreams. Rasha Goel has more on why this group of graduates are part of a unique and special batch.
Landry Arumba from Africa is among this unique batch of students graduating from high school. He is part of the first senior graduating class at the American University Preparatory School, an international boarding school in downtown Los Angeles.
I'm a small boy from a small country in Africa. I never thought I could find an opportunity like this, but all it took was I keep believing in myself and my ability and I used the internet. I just keep searching and searching. Don't give up. I gave up so many times when I saw schools and they're like, "We don't want international students from Africa," but you just keep looking.
The high school opened in 2014 and is embedded in the financial district. It is open to both international and domestic students. These students were part of the school's first sophomore class.
I've had the experience of living with roommates from across the world here at AUP and it's been my honor to get to know people from different cultures.
The city of Los Angeles welcomes you. Los Angeles respects you and that is because we know you. It is estimated that there are 224 languages spoken in Los Angeles. We are home very often to the second largest population of many immigrants outside of the native country.
This batch represents a diverse group of a dozen high school students from Afghanistan, Botswana, Nigeria, Russia, Taiwan, Rwanda, Venezuela, and the US. The curriculum at the school focuses on preparing students for college and training them to be future global leaders.
We all come together. We talk about world issues. We talk about it from different perspectives, from different countries. It's just a great global environment, which is exactly what downtown Los Angeles is all about.
For many here, they are now on their way to make their dreams come true. Some of these students will be continuing on to Stanford, MIT, USC, and Penn State for higher education. And as in Arumba's case, you can always reach for the stars even when things seem impossible. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
If you'd like more information on the program and admissions, you can check out the school's website at aupschool.org. Well, seniors at West Adams High were also celebrating graduation as parents and relatives beamed with pride. But for one senior, graduation day was about making her own kids proud. Gil Reyes has more.
Meet Melissa Vivas, valedictorian at West Adams Preparatory High School's class of 2017. She's also a teen mom, raising a pair of two-year-old twin daughters plus a five-month-old baby girl.
I did it because they're my motivation. I want them to have a better life than the one I did. I want them to look at me and think I'm the role model for them.
Melissa graduates with a perfect 4.0 GPA. It hasn't been easy. Her day usually starts at 5:00 in the morning.
Then I had to make breakfast for my kids. I would get ready around 7:00 and head up to school around 8:00, catch the bus, and be there at school at 8:10, exactly for the bell to ring.
Melissa credits her husband, mom, and the LA Promise Fund for helping her through. The LA Promise Fund rearranged her class assignments to meet her busy schedule and helped in the college application process. It also provided her class paid, community-based internships. Melissa interned at the United Way.
They would train us to become leaders, to learn what's going on in our community and to give back to them, to put our voices for the ones that don't have voices and to be strong despite all the obstacles and all the people out there that want us to not continue up.
Today, we celebrate students like Melissa and tomorrow, we just jump right back on the wheel to provide more opportunities for students like Melissa here in South Los Angeles. First-generation students, students of color, foster kids, really any student that needs the extra boost and the extra resources to accomplish whatever it is they seek to accomplish.
Melissa was accepted to several universities but is headed to Cal State Los Angeles. In the West Adams District, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Now Melissa plans to pursue a career in nursing so she can help others in her community. Well, turning now to an Italian restaurant that's keeping tradition alive in Chinatown. And now the iconic eatery is getting its Italian heritage recognized with a renaming of a street corner. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Pastrami, number six.
We're here. To go.
Ah, yes. Good old Italian pastrami. This old Italian restaurant sits just off the edge of Chinatown. The area was once an Italian neighborhood, Victor Heights, before the influx of new immigrants changed its makeup. But now council District 1 officials are giving the Italian hangout a little street The street corner has a new name, East Side Market Square, in honor of the longstanding restaurant.
The fact that we've been here, you know, for all those years and we were able to continue to stay in business and even during the riots, even during the hard times, they still kept it open. It's great that, you know, we're able to be recognized and have some type of commemorative plaque.
Giovanni Ann Julie, his three sons, his wife, brother, and sister-in-law, worked hard to keep the business afloat. The secret ingredient...
I do fresh food. Starting each morning to start with fresh pots, fresh clean pots with olive oil and garlic and basil.
At one time in the 1920s, there were four Italian markets in the area. This one is the last remaining one.
And I think so long as you stay true to your recipes and your heritage and your culture, people are going to value that and they're going to keep coming for decades to come.
So what are those tasty morsels that keep the people coming back?
I love the lasagna. I love it. And I love the eggplant.
So what's a Japanese-American doing eating Italian food?
This is LA. I come regularly to the East Side Market. Have their messi sandwiches, lots of gravy and sauce.
And the Ann Julies say immigrants of all kinds are always welcome.
It wasn't easy. You can ask me, I was 11 years old when I first arrived. Immigrants should be loved just like anybody else because they are the future of America.
Now the restaurant has its own future to look forward to. It will always be remembered through the renaming of a street corner. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The restaurant is located at 1013 Alpine Street near downtown LA. Well, nearby in Boyle Heights, some folks got to see what long-awaited street improvements could look like once they're finished. As Gil Reyes reports, the upgrades blend safety and art.
This painted sidewalk is only temporary but aims to slow down the parade of vehicles coming off the 101, 5, and 10 freeways. Drivers entering this community, Pico Aliso, that's in Boyle Heights.
They're not aware that people live here and so they either speed through or they're making right-hand turns and almost hitting people. We are looking at different strategies and efforts to make the streets safer, but also great streets.
Proyecto Pastoral's Community in Action Program unveils the temporary crosswalk on Fourth and Gilles Streets, an area with a lot of children. The group's volunteers are collaborating with the mayor's Great Streets Program to make the crosswalk permanent. Great Streets is a plan to refurbish 15 of the city's busiest corridors.
Residents from Proyecto Pastoral and resident leaders have been involved for the last several months, doing door-to-door knocking and collecting surveys and meeting with residents to collect information about the needs and the vision for a safer community.
Also added, temporary street signs, trees, and furniture, possible previews of things to come. Though the weekend traffic isn't too bad, it's gotten worse since the Sixth Street Bridge closed for renovations.
That has brought an overflow of traffic into our area and so as a result, we've had incidents where there's traffic congestion that are blocking, creating barricades.
The masked Mexican wrestlers, or luchadores, pay homage to this mostly Spanish-speaking community. Even Nacho Libre showed up to lay the smackdown for safer streets. In Pico Aliso, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Great Streets Initiative aims to beautify corridors for safer walking, cycling, and shopping. The plan calls for improving 15 streets, one from each city council district. As we head into summer, a lot of us will be spending time enjoying the LA River. But this winter's heavy rains have left many parts of the river a mess. So the community has stepped up to lend a helping hand. Rasha Goel has more.
We want our river back. Do you agree?
Yeah!
Yes, we do. And together, we're making it happen.
Angelinos of all ages had no problem getting their hands dirty as they came out to support the 28th Annual Great LA River Cleanup, filling trash bag after trash bag.
This is public space. Let's get in there and make it ours and actually use it.
Friends of the LA River, a nonprofit organization ensuring the sustainability of the LA River, recently put on a three-weekend cleanup event called La Gran Limpieza. It covered 14 sites along the upper, mid, and lower parts of the river. This particular event focused on the Lower River.
All of us together are mobilizing over 10,000 volunteers to clean what we estimate is going to be 100 tons of trash out of this river.
Not a surprise considering officials say nearly 2,000 storm drains open up to the river and this year's rains also had a significant impact.
LA River is a big part of our local culture, so, you know, we want to help to change it for the better.
And that will happen, volunteers say, if we all do our part.
We need to reduce our pollution, reduce our trash that ends up in the ocean, ends up in our environment.
For LA This Week, I'm Rasha Goel.
Officials say this is the largest urban river cleanup in the nation. Councilmember Gil Sadio officially begins his second term, an electric car sharing program hits the road, and community members dive into summer at the Hollywood Pool. All these stories in City Beat. LA City Councilmember Gil Sadio was officially sworn in by the city clerk, marking the beginning of a second term on the Los Angeles City Council after winning a contentious and drawn-out election. Sadio will continue to lead on tenant rights issues as chair of the Housing Committee and as the chair of the Immigrant Affairs and Civil Rights Committee. Sadio will continue to represent a district that was created as a result of a redistricting lawsuit, which created an additional seat to represent the growing Latino population. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti, alongside state officials and the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, launched the Blue LA Electric Car Sharing Program. Officials say the program is a pilot project that will deploy 100 electric cars and 200 EV charging stations in disadvantaged communities, providing residents with self-service access to electric cars beginning later this year. It will also help LA meet Clean Air Goals and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Officials say the program is the largest in the nation for disadvantaged communities.
Now we have a tool reducing congestion and emissions in neighborhoods that experience the greatest pollution. Here, where the asthma and cancer rates are highest, we can say, "Not only do we have a solution, but a great way to get around."
Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell took the first dive into the Hollywood Pool, marking the opening of the facility for the summer season. The pool, which is located at the Hollywood Recreation Center at Santa Monica Boulevard between Cole Avenue and Coengue Boulevard, opened to the public in 2015 after an extensive renovation project. The 9,500-square-foot pool features a slide, three shaded bleachers, and California-friendly landscaping. Recreational swimming hours will be from 2:00 to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 1:00 to 5:00 PM on weekends.
I want to teach and spread the word about the joys of swimming and learning how to swim and what great exercise it is and how the whole entire family can get in the pool together.
And if you or your kids don't know how to swim but want to learn, you're in luck. A city swim program that's been around for more than a decade returns for the summer and all you have to do is show up. Rasha Goel has more.
Operation Splash is now in full swing at 38 LA City seasonal swimming pools. The program offers free swim lessons for kids and adults in low-income areas and a junior lifeguard training program for kids ages 10 to 17.
This program, Operation Splash, not only is a preventative tool to eliminate drownings, but also it gives us an opportunity to promote healthy living, exercise with kids and adults at our public pools.
The kickoff celebration took place at the 109th Street Pool in Watts, which has been a part of the community for decades.
The pool was originally built in the 1930s and has been serving the Watts community for generations. This pool serves an estimated 6,000 residents that live within a one-half-mile radius walking distance from here.
Jamia Bent, who hopes to compete on the Olympic water polo team one day, discovered her passion at LA City Pools.
I just want to thank LA 84 and the aquatic programs for giving me this opportunity because I never would have, like, I never would have seen what I was capable of in becoming a goalie.
This is the 12th year for Operation Splash, a collaborative effort between the city's Department of Recreation and Parks Aquatic Division, the LA 84 Foundation, and Kaiser Permanente.
Kaiser Permanente's Operation Splash is about getting out there and being very active. Exercise reduces not only the risk of chronic diseases like high blood pressure or diabetes, but also helps in prevention of the cancer.
A little splashing with many benefits. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
A youth swim pass, which costs $10 and gives access to all aquatic facilities throughout the summer, is also available. You can check out laparks.org for more information. We'll grab a picnic and blanket as Shakespeare Comes Alive by the Sea. Grab a donut and help those in need during a donation event. And here's your chance to sing your heart out, just like Maria. All this and this week's Things to Do. Shakespeare by the Sea presents Macbeth as one of two offerings in its 20th anniversary season. If you're seeking quality family entertainment, Shakespeare by the Sea's free performances can't be beat. Pack a picnic, a blanket and beach chair, gather loved ones, and settle in under the stars for a night of classic entertainment. The tales are timeless, the admission ticketless, and the experience priceless. Take in the experience on June 24th at Point Furman Park, located at 807 West Paseo Del Mar in San Pedro. For more, visit shakespearebythec.org. LA Councilmember Mitchell Englander and the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission invite you to donuts and donations. Drop off your donations and learn more about everything CD-12 and the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission are doing to combat the ongoing homelessness issues in our neighborhood. The Rescue Mission serves as a link to social services in the community. Its team is dedicated to providing the homeless men, women, children, veterans, and families the opportunity to obtain food, shelter, basic life necessities, and the chance to rebuild a foundation for individual and family restoration. So clean out your closet and bring items for donation while enjoying a few donuts and coffee with the community. It all takes place Saturday, June 24th, from 8:30 to 2:00 PM at the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, located at 8756 Camby Avenue in Northridge.
The hills are alive with the sound of music.
The Hollywood Hills are alive with the Sound of Music and you can be part of the action as you belt out all of your favorite tunes during the Sound of Music sing-along. Sing along with Maria and join in choruses of My Favorite Things, along with thousands of fans who love the Oscar-winning movie as much as you do. Don't miss the fun on June 24th at 6:30 PM. For more, visit HollywoodBowl.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
These are a few of my favorite things when the dawn...
Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hey, buddy! Don't you know you should never leave a cooking pan unattended? And a working smoke detector can warn you of a fire! Like the one behind me! My hero!
Next time, listen to the ball. Have a smoke detector and a fire extinguisher that work. How'd you know? When a physical encounter occurs between man and machine, the machine always wins. Please, don't lose. Obey all the rules of the road.
Don't let me make the same mistake again.
Don't worry, Patty. This isn't going to hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.[1318.76]
...
And finally, there is a request to continue item 34 to July 25, 2017, sir.
Okay, so ordered, Mr. Coretts.
I'd like to ask that item 2 and 29 be called special. Uh, 39. 2 and 39 be called special.
Okay, when we get there, Mr. Coretts. Okay, um, continue.
Mr. President, item number 1 is an item noticed for public hearing, and, sir, there are cards on this item.
Then continue.
Items 2 through 29 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee report for item number 2 should be held on the desk in as much as it should be posted and circulated.
Okay, and if I remember correctly, Mr. Coretts wanted to hold that item as well. So do we have any other requests from the members?
Yes.
I don't see any, so let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items number 30 through 35 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Any specials or any cards on these items?
Mr. President, there are cards on all items, sir.
Okay, continue.
On the continuation agenda, items 36 through 38 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold number 36 for a substitute motion, sir.
Okay, then that's exactly what we'll do. Why don't we vote on the remaining? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Ms...
Mr. Blumenfield.
Item number 3 for Mr. Cidio, could we make that forthwith? It's already been passed.
Okay, so order.
Mr. President...
Yes.
This brings counsel to items called special or presentation, sir.
Well, before we move on, I want to reconsider item 17 from Wednesday's agenda. So this first vote is on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Okay, let's wait a minute.
Just for clarification, item 17 from Wednesday meeting is counsel file 14-0366-S5, sir.
Thank you. So now let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
The man that we honor today has been a part of this organization for over 35 years in a variety of capacities. As their chief financial officer, as the number-two guy, and since 2000, the number-one, the president and CEO. Could we give Paul another round of applause? I don't believe that one chooses to be engaged in a nonprofit organization. I don't think that you choose to be a public servant. I believe that it is a calling, and the city of Los Angeles is a much better place because Paul was called to do what he could to help those less fortunate than himself. He is joined here by other movers and shakers of the organization, but more importantly, he's joined here today by his wife. Nikki, where are you? Right, okay, let's give her a round of applause. I mean, it is not easy when, you know, your spouse works crazy schedules, you know, you're never off, you never know when you're going to get that phone call, you never... There's always... There is always an emergency, and there is never enough money. So I think we should give Nikki another round of applause. In fact, it's my understanding that as Paul is retiring, and I am just so... I mean, like I said, this organization has been around since 1850. So I know the person that steps in will do a phenomenal job as well, because that's just the way that the people are that are connected with this great organization. But we are going to miss you, Paul, and Paul and Nikki are going to move up north as they go into the next chapter of their life. And maybe he will share with us what that next chapter will be. But I will say this to you, Paul. I want you to think about this. Paul Castro-Cavalier. You could become an actor. See, that's an actor's name. Paul Castro-Cavalier. You can be an actor from Northern California. But anyway, ladies and gentlemen, a man that truly believes in putting people first, an organization that has provided services in each and every one of our districts, even though they may not be located or housed in that district. Let's give it up for our retiring president, Paul Castro. I want to ask you to say a few words, and maybe you can introduce us to some of the other important board members that are with us today.
Before we do, we do have a couple of members on the queue, so I'd ask Mr. Rue, say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Councilmember Weston, for bringing this amazing organization forward today. And it is a happy day that you brought them here, but very sad to see Paul Castro's retiring. As you mentioned, Jewish Family Services is a flagship social service provider in the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles. And I do have a facility in my district, and I did go visit, learning all the amazing services that you guys provide. You are a pivotal resource for my office, and anything I can do to support Paul, I would love to hold you back, but I think you deserve your retirement, and congratulations to you and your wife, and thank you for everything that you guys do. Thank you.
Mr. Coretts.
Well, thank you. I've been working with JFS for over 30 years in a couple of cities and also the state legislature, and it's hard to picture this organization without Paul Castro. You and JFS have done so many amazing things in my district and far beyond. I'm so proud of your great work. I also appreciate the fact that you flag for us when federal cuts are happening, like to Meals on Wheels, and we were able to help fill that in. I don't think we would have known about that without JFS. And you've done such an incredible job over the years. I join my colleagues in sadness in your retirement. Obviously, better for you, not as good for the community, but you've done an amazing job over the years, so I just want to recognize you for that and congratulate you.
Thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. President.
Back to you, Paul.
Thank you, Councilmember Weston, and all of the council members. I really do appreciate the recognition this morning, but more importantly, as I've been with the agency so many years, the partnership with the city, the work that we do in many of your districts has been critical and really essential to how we maintain a safety net for those that are most vulnerable in our communities. So we couldn't do the work that we do alone, and your support and partnership has really made a huge difference in the lives of so many of the people who come to JFS for services on a day-in and day-out basis. I would like to acknowledge you've met... You've heard about my wife, but there are others here. Members of the board, we have Debbie Barrett, who's a past chair of the board. Dina Schechter, also a past chair. Shannon Passman, our current chair. David Foulman, who is also a member of the board. And then we have a number of staff folks back here from Ninoska and Valerie and Karen and Remy, Suzie, and... Well, Nikki's not a staff member, but she probably should be. Anyway, thank you so much for this honor. I really do appreciate it.
Oh, great. Thank you very much for all the services you do, and let's give him another big round of applause, shall we? of applause, shall we?
Yes, yes, you've got to be part of it. We've got to whisper. We're whispering. Okay, let's go this way. We'll go in the back.
All right, it's now my honor and privilege to welcome Councilmember Gilbert Sadio to the podium for a very, very special presentation today. Let's give him a round of applause as he's making his way.
Can we please have all the members have their honorees stand behind them or with them at their desks?
Your wife, your mom.
Yes.
So he's going to ask you up to the podium to speak, and you'll see your short clip, and at the end, we're going to give you an official proclamation, so just hang out here.
Is she going first?
No, 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 you're going to start it off. The instructions are, you want to hear the speech, I appreciate all this. So we're going to open with the video, and we're going to close with the video. And then this is our honoree behind you.
Can we please roll the video?
Absolutely.
By wind, struck rock and stuck. Together we came across the ocean and towards the unknown. By horse and wheel, westward we came, chasing the sunset. We came by steam, across rivers, over mountains and valleys, towards the promise of a new beginning. We conquered the skies, built planes, buses, and cars. When we had nothing else, we came on foot, ran, and walked, and crawled. We made history in the wake of those who came before us, before the waves of all of those yet to come. We carried luggage, letters, and loved ones. Some of us carried nothing but our own potential. We came for love, for liberty, for life. Our reasons for coming were as unique and as numerous as the forces that brought us here. But once we arrived, all of us did the exact same thing. We helped build this country, and we were welcome.
I find it personally quite moving to see all the incredible diversity, and I see it here on the floor right this very minute. It's just an exciting and incredible city. We're all here by the hopes and aspirations of our families, of our parents, our grandparents, our great-grandparents, and we all have this great blessing and honor to be standing here together. We are here today to celebrate the fourth annual Immigrant Heritage Month. We're here to honor specific individuals who make a great cultural contribution to this great city, this state, and this nation. You've heard me say that this nation has been built on the backs of immigrants, that immigrants are our history, that this is uniquely an immigrant nation, and we are at war today for the future of this nation. We are at war to determine whether or not we will continue with that legacy and continue to protect that heritage. Donald Trump began his campaign attacking immigrants and continues to do so with his policies each and every day. We are here to stand up to those policies, to recognize and acknowledge the incredible diversity of this room, of this city, state, and nation. We're here to celebrate all that is brought together, the entrepreneurship, the ethic of hard work, the family values, the commitment to faith, the belief that our better days are in front of us. We are here to say welcome to all immigrants of this city. The story is not unique; it is actually part of who we are. And so I'm proud to be here with you today. I want to thank the mayor, who is at a meeting today with the conference of mayors throughout the nation, sharing the same message. This is so important at this very moment. Now is the time for us to make true this promise of democracy. Now is the time for us to embrace our history, acknowledge our present, and look forward to our future. Now is the time for us to recognize all that immigrants bring to our community. I want to introduce another partner of ours, representing Forward.us. Sandra Shaly is the Southern California organizing director for them, and this is our fourth year working with them, and I thank them. They are great partners, and they are on point in understanding how significant the immigrant experience is for our nation today. So with that, let me introduce Sandra Shaly from the Forward.us.
Thank you.
Let's give her a round of applause. Let's make her feel welcome.
Thank you, councilmembers and Mayor Garcetti. On behalf of Forward.us and Welcome.us, we are proud to join in on highlighting the countless contributions that immigrants have made and continue to make in our culture, our economy, and our local cities like LA. Since 2014, Immigrant Heritage Month has given people across the United States an opportunity to explore their own heritage and celebrate the shared diversity that forms the unique story of America. In continuing that effort, this year, we've collaborated with 55 members of Congress, including Congresswoman Judy Chu, and have been issued so far over 140 proclamations from elected officials, and we've also successfully partnered with over 270 companies and organizations in celebrating Immigrant Heritage Month. We are asking everyone, individuals, companies, public leaders, to take concrete action in supporting immigrants here in America, share stories of the crucial ways that diverse communities enrich our society, and join a growing coalition across the country to loudly proclaim that we stand with immigrants. Thank you so much.
Members, we've obviously introduced a resolution with other members to declare June 2017 as Immigrant Heritage Month, and... Yes, thank you. I'm on cue with my director, Freddie Seha. Mr. Weston, you have a presentation for us. You're up first.
I like being up first. I appreciate that, Mr. Sadio. Anyway, let me just say that one of the things that makes this, even with our flaws, the greatest country in the world, is that we have rich cultures from all over the world that make the United States of America. And members, I'm proud to present to you a couple of restaurateurs from Council District 10, from the little Ethiopia community, which is off Fairfax in my district. So I have with me Brahnu and his brother Gedehun. Asfa, give them a round of applause. But just real quickly, Brahnu used to own like a tourist shop in Ethiopia, and he met an African-American doctor at a time when the communists were taking lands away from the Ethiopians, and he sponsored Brahnu to come to this country. He worked his guts out as a laborer, saved money, and he sent for his brother Gedehun and his children and his niece. They worked as taxi cab drivers. And Gedehun was a security officer at West LA Community College, and he was also a track star. And then in the early, or 2000, they bought Masab Restaurant on Fairfax, and they have been like my brothers and dear friends since the moment that I was elected to this office. They were instrumental in naming the only area in the United States, Little Ethiopia. They helped do it. They were involved in redistricting, where they took all of Little Ethiopia and put it in one district. Ladies and gentlemen, stand up, guys. Give my two nominees a round of applause, Brahnu and Gedehun.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's go next to my left, the honorable and honored councilmember, he's honored because he gets to represent Bora Heights, the honorable Jose Uisad, from the 14th district.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, for bringing this to us each and every year. We celebrate not only the lives of people who have found the American dream, but also the richness that they bring with them to continue to make LA one of the most diverse cities of the world at this time. And today, it's my honor to present a truly remarkable individual who has done so much not only in the culinary arena, but also has made something of himself, which shows with what happens when you have grit, determination, and a passion for food. I'm proud that more than ever, downtown LA is becoming a culinary epicenter for Los Angeles, and Rice Bar is no exception. This is a great new restaurant here in downtown LA. But the reason Rice Bar is so good is its chef and owner, Charles Olilia. Olilia, there you go, Olilia. Charles brings a unique mix of family traditions and fine dining experience to his tiny counter space. And let me tell you a little bit more about him. He was born in Manila in a family of nine. He grew up on traditional Filipino cuisine prepared at home. After graduating pre-med at a university in Manila, he planned to follow in the footsteps of his parents, both doctors and his six siblings, four doctors and two nurses. They could start their own hospital, it appeared. But Charles realized he had his own path to follow. He wanted to follow his dreams of cooking and came to the United States to attend a culinary program. After graduating, he worked his way from the barrier to Las Vegas to an extremely prestigious spot at The French Laundry, one of the top-rated restaurants in the world, at the age of 23. After moving to LA, Charles spent a year and a half as the executive chef at Patina, one of LA's most acclaimed restaurants here in downtown. But even the prestige of cooking at the base of Walt Disney Concert Hawk couldn't fully satisfy him, and so he embarked on projects that would better allow him to tap into his roots and share his cultural identity with Angelenos. And that's when Charles made another major life switch, leaving behind the fine dining world and opening up his own tiny counter service spot, serving affordable Filipino food. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you a great star in downtown Los Angeles, someone who is bringing the culinary Filipino food to not only downtown, but people who come from all over to see him, Charles Olilia.
The address? 4019 West 7th Street.
Okay.
401? 4019.
4019, West 7th Street. Mr. Coretza, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio, and thank you for bringing this to all of us here today. Today, I'm proud to recognize and honor a true Armenian-American multigenerational success story, living the American dream here in CD5. Mr. and Mrs. Norar and Pega Harmonian and Mrs. Lucy Harmonian of the renowned Baklava Factory, based out of Encino, California, are here today. And the factory founder, Mr. Adis Harmonian, who's also a world-famous Armenian singer and entertainer, can't be with us today as he is currently participating in an exhibition of his paintings in Lebanon. But let me tell you his story and his family who are joining us today. In 1978, three years into the civil war in Beirut, and with no sign of peace on the horizon, the patriarch of the Harmonian family, Adis, already having traveled the world as an Armenian pop singer, decided to move his family to safe refuge in Los Angeles. At the time, Los Angeles was becoming a hub for the Armenian community, and since Adis had already performed in the big city, he figured that moving to Los Angeles would make the transition smoother, and he hoped that the family would embrace and find happiness in their newly adopted city. So in June of 1978, the family moved with his three children, aged 2, 8, and 12, to LA, all eventually graduating from CSUN. In 1999, Adis approached his son Norar to open a pastry shop, and luckily for all of us, but not necessarily our diets, the Baklava Factory was born. To enter the Baklava Factory is to experience a Baklava like you've never even imagined. The otherwise-traditional filo dough, walnuts, and honey treat are displayed in rows and rows in a wide variety of shapes, sizes, flavors, and gift packages. After a great deal of research and development, coupled with word-of-mouth recommendations, the family has turned this operation into three storefronts in Los Angeles with customers around the world. Baklava Factory ships across the United States and internationally, and they have brought these delicacies here for us to try as well. Norar and his wife have appeared on The Discovery Channel, Keeping Up With The Kardashians, The Wedding Channel, and multiple print publications. So please join me in recognizing all of them, and also joining them are relatives Estepan and Tena Bakarian and nephew George Abajian. So let's recognize them all with a big round of applause.
Now, Mr. Kokorian, you have a dali you're going to present to us?
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Sadio. Thank you for bringing us a presentation that really makes visible for the world to see the richness of the culture of Los Angeles, a culture that has been enriched by every corner of the world, every continent. Many of us who are sitting around this horseshoe, of course, in fact, all of us, come from immigrant roots, and some were recent than others, but all of us came from someplace else to find what Los Angeles has to offer. And the honorees that we're recognizing today are certainly great examples of that, and I'm very honored to be able to recognize Lilith Bakery and Cafe and their founders and owners, Sam and Anna Shashikyan, who immigrated here and formed a business that has served our community in my district, has grown, has expanded job opportunities, and has built a wonderful relationship with our community. Sam immigrated to this country from Armenia... Sam immigrated to this country from Armenia in 1989 as a 20-year-old with no real experience in business, no real experience in running a store or a bakery, except what he learned from his grandparents and that were handed down to his family. And yet, arriving here as a young man, like so many others who are in this room, who've built a future for themselves in Los Angeles and for their families. Sam embarked upon the effort of opening a store. He opened a grocery store called Zaitun Grocery and then a second store, Olive Market, who many of you probably have visited in Valley Glen. And it offers produce and products from all over the world to a broad immigrant, a broad community of immigrant customers. But that wasn't enough. They, Sam and Anna, started then baking their own goods and started Lilith Baked Goods within Olive Market. And many of you have been the recipients of Lilith Bakery's goods. Some of my Christmas presents to all of you have come from Lilith. And for a number of the events that we've hosted here, they've been very gracious in helping to cater. That business enterprise was so successful that they've now been able to open up a beautiful new restaurant, Lilith Bakery Restaurant, also in North Hollywood, that features not only wonderful baked goods, but pizza and a number of other things, and it has been a tremendous success. So it's a great story of the immigrant experience. Sam coming here and Anna coming here as immigrants, building a business, and then taking that business to the point that a few years ago, when the president of the Nagorno-Karabakh Republic was here in council, Sam was able to cater that event for us in the city council chambers of the second-largest city in America. So to go from an immigrant with no experience in this business to catering for a president, that is the immigrant experience. That's what Los Angeles offers people, and that's why I'm so proud to recognize Lilith Bakery and their owners, Sam and Anna. So thank you very much for both being with us, and thank you for your service.
The Honorable Nuri Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Good morning. And thank you for allowing us to have an opportunity to showcase our immigrant entrepreneurs in our districts. This morning, I'd like to recognize Van Nuys business owner Paul Rodriguez and his family-owned business Mercado Buenos Aires, an authentic Argentinian market and restaurant. Mercado Buenos Aires was founded in 1989 by Manuel Manny Rodriguez, Paul's father. They had been offering residents of the San Fernando Valley an opportunity to experience Argentinian culture through the foods and produce that they sell. Manny immigrated to the United States from Argentina in the early 1980s and first settled in New Jersey. After a few years living in New Jersey with his family, Manny's friends convinced him to move to Van Nuys. Manny worked in a meat wholesale company back in Argentina and decided to open Mercado Buenos Aires on Sepulveda Boulevard in Van Nuys. At first, Mercado Buenos Aires only sold Argentinian produce, and later Manny decided to add a kitchen to serve breakfast, lunch, and pastries to his customers. Aside from produce and food and produce, Mercado Buenos Aires has been a gathering location for the Argentinian community and the local community members. Folks come to celebrate Argentinian community at Mercado Buenos Aires, and they also gather to watch the Argentinian National Soccer Team play or watch Pope Francis deliver his speech. Mercado Buenos Aires always, has always been busy with customers and is much more than a restaurant and a market. Manny has also played a vital role in local economy by hiring from the local community, people who actually live in Van Nuys. Paul would go to the market and help his father after school. And when he graduated from high school, he attended the Lecor Blue School of Culinary Arts and applied his expertise in his family business. Paul helped train newly hired chefs before branching off on his own to open up his own ventures. In 2001, Paul was only 24-years-old when he opened the Buenos Aires Grilled in Northridge, and it's thriving to this day. However, Paul's father became very ill after suffering a massive heart attack, and Manny was, Manny asked Paul to take over Mercado Buenos Aires. After three years of the Buenos Aires Grill thriving, he opened a third Buenos Aires Grilled in Granada Hills, and he plans to continue expanding his family business throughout the San Fernando Valley. He wants to offer Angelinos from across Los Angeles an opportunity to experience and taste authentic Argentinian cuisine. In total, Paul has helped to create over 90 jobs in the San Fernando Valley. He believes in contributing back to the community and supporting local businesses. Paul has brought this morning a sample of empanadas, which are in the back, and it's a very popular food in Mercado Buenos Aires. He brought four variations, steak, chicken, spinach, and cheese for those vegetarians like Mr. Harris Dawson, and chorizo for everyone to enjoy. I want to thank Paul and recognize his family for the amazing work and contribution to the San Fernando Valley. We lost Manny three years ago to a heart attack, so he's not with us anymore, but I know that he's smiling from heaven, and he's very proud of Paul. Congratulations, and thank you for letting me share his story.
I don't see Mr. Farrell. Mr. Ru, you're going to...
Yes, I'm filling in for Councilman Farrell. It is my pleasure to present on behalf of Councilman Mitchell Farrell and the Great 13th District, home to Little Armenia, to Little Bangladesh, and historic Filipino town to Koreatown. This, the 13th District's honoree is a family-owned restaurant and the only one in original southern Thai food restaurant called Jitlada, owned by Sarantip Jazz Sing San, Sing Sanong and her brother Sudiporn Tui Sangkami. Jitlada is named after the royal palace in Bangkok. Jitlada opened in the late 70s and quickly earned an enthusiastic following among foodies everywhere. The competition for the city's best Thai food gets fiercer by the day, but Jitlada remains the original of the no-hold-bar southern Thai cooking. And of course, you have to recognize its insanely long menus, colorful dining rooms, and the Hollywood clientele make it a good place as any to start when trying to learn the landscape of Los Angeles' deep, vast Thai food scene. It's become a pilgrimage, a pilgrimage site for spy seekers and also lovers of Thai food. And you know, I'm honored to have Jazz and, you know, unfortunately, her brother and the Master Chef Tui could not join us today because he is in the hospital, but we do hope for his speedy recovery. But we have Jazz here, who I just want to state, this is what Los Angeles is, and this is the Los Angeles and American story. She came to this country in 1979 with one suitcase and $200 in her pocket, and now has the most premier Thai restaurant that's featured in the Travel Channel, the Food Network, and multiple other food stations that are going to come on TV. And she has built an empire, also being able to immigrate 12 of her family members, who are all now living in the United States. And I'm honored to have Jazz here today to celebrate June as Immigrant Heritage Month in Los Angeles. And I'd like to present the certificate on behalf of the 13th District and Councilmember Mitchell Farrell to Jitlada for positively contributing to the cultural melting pot of the city and for making their home in the Great 13th District. Thank you.
Honorable Karen Price.
Thank you, Councilman, and again, we just appreciate your leadership on these issues, and we just salute all the awardees today. You certainly have been a source of inspiration and encouragement for us all. But I'd like to introduce the District 9 honoree, Mr. Tito Rivera. Let's give it up for Tito.
Tito.
Yeah. Tito is a very special guy, but before I talk about how special he is, let me talk about his food. If you're watching your carbs, don't go by Vis Tango there on 30th and Figueroa, but if you want to try some of the most delectable pasta dishes like Peni Putendesca or Cajun Chicken Pasta, or entries like Rib Steak, Rigobai Steak, or Grilled Salmon, Vis Tango is the place to go. Now about Tito. It's been, it's been a, he's been in the restaurant business for a long time, starting as a dishwasher. And he started to work himself up to a chef and manager. He's worked in some of the finest Italian restaurants in Los Angeles. Tito believes in quality food and affordable prices, something we can all believe in. Prior to opening Vis Tango, Tito worked at Sprazizio, Sprazio in Malibu as a chief, as the executive chef, before opening Vis Tango in 2013. Despite speaking Italian cuisine fluently, Tito is originally from El Salvador, and I had the pleasure of meeting him when I first took office and have had a number of meetings at his restaurant. I know some of you did small efforts in your district for the Special Olympic Torch Run. I found out that Tito helped sponsor the Special Olympics athletes from El Salvador this past season. The Special Olympics doesn't get the fanfare it deserves, and often athletes are left to travel alone without the much-needed support from their families. Well, Tito stepped up to help fill those needs, providing money, food, housing, and travel for those athletes coming from El Salvador. He's donated his time, his food, to our events, and he's always a gracious community partner, and I couldn't be more appreciative of him. So let's give it up for Vis Tango, located at 3017 South Figueroa Street, that's 30th and Fig. Please stop by. We're honored to recognize Tito today.
Bravo. Tito. The highest-ranking Korean-American elected in Los Angeles and in California, the Honorable David Ru.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio. I am super excited today, and thank you so much for doing this, because I finally, finally, after two decades of going to this restaurant, finally met the owner. And I am so excited because I get to bring to you the 4th District's honoree, the world-famous, the one and only, the restaurant that put Peruvian food on the map, and that's Mario's Peruvian and Seafood Restaurant located in Larchmont Community at 5786 Melrose Avenue, which is a southeast corner of Melrose and Vine. If you don't know this place, Lomo Salgado, the green, I don't know if it's sauce or if it's a salsa, but it's so spicy, but you can't stop eating it. This is an amazing place. And the founder and chef is Mario Tomashiro, who opened its restaurant's doors in September of 1990. And Mario is a second-generation Japanese, Nise descent, born in Peru. He immigrated to the United States in 1986 with his wife Gloria and his two sons, Dennis and Fernando. With a family to support, Mario worked in several Peruvian restaurants as a chef, and his dream was to someday open his own restaurant and introduce Angelinos to Peruvian cuisine. For nearly 30 years, when he did open it, for nearly 30 years, Mario's Peruvian and Seafood Restaurant has been serving authentic, high-quality Peruvian dishes to people of all backgrounds, including movie stars, musicians, politicians, and professional athletes. Mario Tomashiro could not join us today, but he is retired, and the restaurant is now managed by his oldest son, Dennis, who started in the family business while he was going to school. Now Dennis is joined by his wife Terry and his daughters Denise, Catherine, and Amy. Now get this, only in Los Angeles. Dennis is a Japanese-Peruvian-American, married to a Spanish-Mexican, and Dennis's first language is Spanish, second language is English, and his third language, if we stretch it, is Japanese. You know, this is Los Angeles, and this is America. And, you know, Mario's, and this is why we do this, and this is great, and Mario's and millions of immigrants in Los Angeles are an integral part to the city's diverse tapestry and economic success. I really want to thank Mario's for serving their delicious food and being part of Los Angeles, and you have to go try Mario's. The only bad thing is they don't take reservations, and it's usually a 30 minutes to an hour late. But I'm told if you guys, councilmembers, want to go, we know Dennis. But with that said, I want to congratulate Mario's and to Dennis and his family for serving us authentic Peruvian food. Thank you.
Mr. Bloomingfeld.
Sadio, and thank you so much for putting this together. It is so wonderful to honor our immigrants during Immigrant Heritage Month and really all year round, because as my colleagues have mentioned, that's what makes our Los Angeles strong and diverse and what makes our country wonderful. Now, it's my honor to recognize Kevin Tran, who's the owner of Vinlo Tofu, a Vietnamese vegetarian cafe and tofu factory in Reseda, in my district. Something came up at the last minute. He's not able to be here today, but I know his family and friends are watching, so I want to make sure I honor him and his amazing story, because he also, not only is he making the world a better place through his amazing tofu, but he has a very interesting story. He grew up in Vietnam, where his father was a soldier who worked for the US government. And after the Vietnam War ended, his father was put in jail, and the family was sent to live in the jungle, where they resided in a tiny, tiny home made of wood and clay with coconut leaves for the roof. One of his uncles escaped to the United States in 1983, and three years later was able to sponsor Kevin, his parents, and his two siblings. Kevin was 17 when he arrived in 1986, not knowing a word of English. Inspired by the many vegans and vegetarians that he had known throughout his life, Kevin and his wife started the business in 2002 because they loved tofu. And they have shared that love of tofu, not only in Reseda, but throughout the San Fernando Valley. The delicious menu offering has garnered rave reviews from the LA Times, Daily News, LA Magazine, The Huffington Post, LA Weekly, and many others. And before opening his restaurant, he worked three different jobs, including working in a beauty supply wholesale business, and he says he actually worked more back then and sold the business to spend more time with his wife and family, and then got involved with the tofu business. So it just happened that this week, he wasn't able to be here, but I wanted to make sure that we did honor him, and I encourage everyone to go out to his restaurant and tofu factory because it is wonderful and it's a gem for the San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vana.
Please stand. Colleagues, this morning, I am very glad to welcome Raoul Sanchez here into our chambers, and your family's out here as well, am I correct? Stand up for a second. Let's acknowledge his family. Raoul is the owner, the proprietor, the creative force behind Casa Sanchez, which is one of the best and most popular and most civically engaged restaurants in my district, situated in Del Rey on Centinela Avenue. Raoul came here in, was it 1974, as a teenager, from Michoacan, Mexico. And his life and his career here has been about food and about community. When he first got here, he sold tacos on the street corner. And then 36 years ago, he opened up a market at Culver and Inglewood to sell fresh fruit and vegetables in the neighborhood of Del Rey, which then, still to a certain degree now, but then was a primarily Latino immigrant neighborhood. About 10 years ago, he opened his second business, which is the restaurant Casa Sanchez, which is a fine dining restaurant, an upscale restaurant, extremely popular in my district. The ceviche in particular is among my favorites. They are known for their elegant dining room, for their beautiful restaurant, and for the mariachi performances, which grace visitors there. But one of the things that really impresses me about Raoul is not just his food, not just his entrepreneurship... not just his entrepreneurship, but really his commitment to the community. I cannot count the number of events I have gone to since taking office, whether at the Mar Vista Gardens Boys and Girls Club, or at the Mar Vista Family Center, or LAPD Pacific Division, or events put on by the Helper Foundation, or at the Homeless Count in Del Rey, where the food and the beverages were not being provided by Casa Sanchez. In fact, my first election night, the party, the food was provided by Casa Sanchez as well. When the community asks for something, when the neighborhood asks for something, he always says yes. He has over 100 employees in my district, some native-born, many immigrants. He is the lifeblood, one of the backbones, a small businessman who sort of makes Los Angeles and its neighborhood work, and its neighborhood works. I would love to be honoring him with a Fram certificate today, and we had planned to, but there was a bit of a glitch. His certificate actually says Bonin Casa Sanchez on it. He was willing to take it, but I
It's the future.
The permits that he would have been required to change his signage, I thought it would be too much. So we will be replacing this, and I will be back with my family for dinner hand-delivering it. So, thank you very much.
A hint at your future in the culinary arts, Mr. Bonin. Lunch on Bonin.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sadio. Standing in for our colleague and brother, Mr. Buscaino of the mighty 15th Council District. He was not able to be here today, but wanted to make sure we got to tell the story of Curtis Shin, who is with us today, who immigrated to Los Angeles when he was a small boy. His parents made the decisions to move to the United States to pursue the American dream, leaving a comfortable life in Korea. They had very little in terms of money and opportunity when they got to this country, but they worked hard, worked several jobs. And their son, Curtis, was able to go on to graduate from one of our great universities, the University of California at Los Angeles.
Yes.
From there, he began a, a career in the private sector and quickly went on to begin to build his own business. He and his wife started their own company, Patio Heaven, nearly 10 years ago. Patio Heaven offers custom-made furniture for a variety of residential and custom commercial needs, anywhere from single-family homes to hotels. As the company grew in success, it moved into a bigger warehouse space and bought on a co-owner, Mr. Anthony Zexopolis. Zexopolis. Mr. Anthony Zexopolis, who is also with us here today and helped me with his, helped me with, with the last name. Not only have they started and grew a successful business, Patio Heaven has joined forces with a local nonprofit called Reignite Hope, a welding school that provides free training for disadvantaged populations. This partnership allows students to receive invaluable skills in welding and enter the workforce as qualified candidates. Upon completion of the course with Reigniting Hope, they are provided with certificates from the American Welding Society. Today, there are many graduates in great careers that allow them to support not only themselves, but their families. These students also build bicycle ambulances that are then shipped to communities around the world, from right here in Los Angeles. These lifesaving donations are only made more remarkable by the fact that they come from a program that enables residents in all of our communities, especially communities like mine, to get the training they need to find a good-paying job. So we want to thank Curtis and Anthony and the whole team at Patio Heaven and Reignited Hope, Reignite Hope. They've contributed to enhancing our local economy, and even more importantly, they've made a stand for social justice by making a way for people who are often locked out of the job market to get into good-quality, good-paying jobs, both here and abroad. So join me on behalf of Councilman Buscaino in thanking and recognizing Patio Heaven and our good friends Curtis and Anthony. And so we have a, yes.
This is the hard part, we gotta take a picture.
Councilman Englander.
Thank you, Councilman Sadio. Today, it is my honor and my privilege to honor David Chun, who's a resident of Council District 12, and who has founded, owned, and/or operated multiple businesses, not only in CD 12, but outside, in fact, beyond the borders of our city. He sends his regrets for not being able to be here today, because in his words, "I've got to be at the restaurant before it opens." There's work to do. It's that kind of dedication to his trade that has made David and so many other immigrants success stories here in Los Angeles. And David's story began here in 1979, when his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Chun, and his sister Esther immigrated to the United States from South Korea. He's a true product of the San Fernando Valley. He attended Beckford Elementary, Nobel Junior High, and Granada Hills Charter High School, or actually, high school at the time. After graduating from UCLA, David helped his parents accomplish their dream of owning a manufacturing business. He and his parents owned and operated Perfect Mold Incorporated, a plastic-injection molding company located in my district in Chatsworth. After almost 20 years of working in the manufacturing business, David found a new passion for physical wellness and opened up a CrossFit gym in Valencia. We all know how CrossFitters need their protein, so it's no surprise that his third business, AYCE GoYi, was a Korean barbecue restaurant located in Van Nuys, where he continues to work to this very day. It's demonstrated by the fact that, that there's, that he's there this very moment. David is extremely happy to be a restaurateur in the valley where he grew up and resides, with his wife Nancy, and sends his deepest thanks and gratitude for this grateful recognition. And I too am grateful for everything he does within the community, civically employing so many people and constantly giving back. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sadio. First, I want to start by thanking you for making sure we have this annual recognition every year. It's important. Now, more than ever, we, we recognize groups from around the world that have residency here in Los Angeles, and we take this opportunity to welcome and to acknowledge all the folks who are immigrants to the United States and to Los Angeles. My honoree today is, is a, a family that's very, very special to me. They demonstrate the point that we really are a city and a country of immigrants. Oftentimes, when the term immigrant is used, we mean someone who got here after you were already here. Turns out, there were immigrants here way long before many of us got here, and they built businesses and established corporations, and I'm happy to honor one today. Give a big round of applause to the Lopez family of the world-famous Leonardo's nightclub and Valentina's Mexican Grill. I'm proud to be joined by Don Leonardo himself and his wife, Edis. They will be celebrating their 43rd wedding anniversary this weekend. Give a little big round of, I know, wow. Leonardo arrived in the US in 1967 from La Noria Durango, I think is the hometown of one of our colleagues. Over 50 years ago, he opened his first restaurant in the city of Beverly Hills in 1972. In 1983, he, he acquired a site at Vermont and 28th Streets in the 8th Council District. And since that time, has acquired a host of other properties, some in the 8th District, some in the 10th, all around the city and surrounding cities. Specialized in buying out bowling alleys, remember, we used to have bowling alleys everywhere. Well, Mr. Leonardo and his family bought those bowling alleys and turned them into ballrooms, nightclubs, and a restaurant. In 1986, Mr. Lopez invested at Manchester and Western. Last year, I had the opportunity of cutting the ribbon at what is now La Valentina's Mexican Grill. We use that off, that meeting space for our staff meetings and community events. The Neighborhood Council comes there to have events. I even walk over there sometimes, when my wife doesn't want to hear all the noise I'm making during, while I watch the game, I walk over to Valentina's on, on Western Boulevard. Throughout the years, the Lopez family is always, always, always there when the community calls. So whether it's Fiesta Broadway, and we started a Fiesta South Broadway last year, the Cinco de Mayo Parade on Vermont Avenue in South Los Angeles, they're always there to support, no matter what the event is, no matter what the community asks. They will bring drinks, they will bring food, they will donate money, they will come and volunteer. They will make sure we have the best mariachi van for every event that there, that there, that there is. We also appreciate the Lopez family, because they stand for something that's very, very important, and I think the backbone of our city and our country, and that is family. And so you see, we got everybody here with us today. We even got some folks in the audience. Make some noise for the little ones in the audience. We've got Leonardo and, and we've got Don Leonardo and Edis. We've got Leonardo Jr., we've got Fernando Eduardo Lisette, Victoria. We've got grandchildren, Fernando, Max, Lucia. We've got Lucy Lopez, Robert Perez, Mariki, Mauricio Hernandez, and a whole, and just a really, really warm family. I'm missing somebody. Oh, oh, thank you so much. There is a mariachi restaurant on Ventura Boulevard that I did not mention. That is also very, very important, very, very important, important to this family. So whenever you're, you cannot drive through Southern California and not see a Leonardo's nightclub and restaurant. And so we are proud on behalf of the 8th District and the city of Los Angeles, on this immigrant day in, in 2017, to honor the Lopez family and Leonardo's world-famous nightclubs. And we also have a plaque, and like Mr. Bonin, I thought they did mine on purpose, but I realized it wasn't. This one says Dawson, La Valentina Mexican Grill, because I felt like they've adopted me into the family, so you can't take me out now. My name is going to be on the wall.
We all have our special stories and memories of Leonardo's throughout the decades, and we are all appreciative of all their contributions to the city of Los Angeles. They have an incredible footprint, and there is no property that they can look at that doesn't have a future as a Leonardo's. And now let me talk about CD 1. As many of you know, we had a election recently in CD 1. And one of the great things is during an election, you get out and get to spend a lot of time out in the community, talking to all your residents and your entrepreneurs. At a recent debate, I was asked to name my five favorite spots in CD 1. And so amongst the many honors that La 27 has, is that it's made my top-five list of restaurants in CD 1. And when you think of a community that is part Vietnamese, part Korean, part Chinese, part Mexican, and definitely part Central American, to make the top five is a real honor. And so they're one of my top five. La 27 began like many others. It's a great story. They had their own pop-ups before there were pop-ups. They were making food, they were popular, and they decided, well, why don't we sell some of our food to our friends and family right at their home over on 27th Street? And so that's where the name comes from. But they went from doing it at their home to now having their own bricks-and-mortar restaurant over on 1830 West Pico Boulevard. Let me repeat that, 1830 West Pico Boulevard. You can find me there at any time in the afternoon, because it's a very vibrant place. Like many of the restaurants in my district, you walk in, you close the doors behind you, and you think you're in another country. It is very authentic, very organic, very organic, and the food, I assure you, is very, very good. I am of particular taste, and this is one of the best food that you can have in CD 1 and all of Los Angeles. So with that, I'd like to honor Yolanda Gutierrez and her husband, Aldo Gutierrez. And if my name is on this, it's because I'm part of the family. So on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, congratulations to Aldo and Yolanda. La 27. Members, before we return to our, our video, just let me thank Forward.usA, and let us all declare this month, June 2017, as Immigrant Heritage Month. Always forward, never backward, as we march forward for a greater country, a greater city, a greater state, embracing our immigrant future. Thank you so much. God bless. So can we get the video so we can close this up, please? Ah, here we go.
And I stand with immigrants.
I stand with immigrants.
We all stand here together, with our hands open.
Stretched out under this beautiful, boundless, American sky. We stand here and celebrate the glories of our nation.
The stories of our people.
With their talents and their beautiful minds.
People who have put their traditions in their pockets and their prides to the side.
To build their worth in the valleys of prosperity like them. I'm an immigrant.
I am an immigrant.
I stand with immigrants.
Where we have stood for hundreds of years.
Pushing, pulling, milling, and tilling with our hands stretched out.
Our palms open wide.
Waiting for a hammer and nail.
A shovel and rake, a basket and fruit.
A dish to wash, a class to teach.
A child to raise, a business to build.
A thriving company to run.
An illness to heal.
A cure for the sick, a mountain to climb.
And one day, stand on the peak of our service to this mighty land.
With our hands stretched out.
We stand here for those who have stood before us.
Their drums to our music.
Their spices to our kitchens.
We will continue to carve a path for them.
Make the road for those ahead.
Stand with them.
With our hands held together by the promise of this land.
I am an immigrant.
I am an immigrant.
I stand with immigrants.
I stand with immigrants.
And I'm the great-grandson of immigrants.
Soy emigrante.
I am an immigrant.
And I stand.
And I stand with immigrants.
Ako ay san immigrante.
I stand with immigrants.
And I stand with immigrants.
I stand with immigrants.
I am the daughter of immigrants. I stand with immigrants.
Mr. Coretts, I'm looking for Mr. Coretts.
Mr. President, just for the record, the committee report for item number two has been posted and circulated.
Okay, let's go to the multiple comment section, Mr. Previn.
Mr. President?
Yes.
There's been a substitute motion submitted for item number 36. It has been posted and circulated, and we should take the public comment cards.
Okay, all right, so Mr. Previn has items 1, B, C, 30, 31, 32, 33, 35, and because of, you said 36?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, and 40, public comment. Act 40, we're not there yet, that's on the special agenda, I'm sorry, Mr. Previn. Go ahead.
Oh, that's okay, you zeroed me out, I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Yeah, item 31 is Worldwide Technologies teaming up with Bloomingfield, the ITA, Maven, to provide some Wi-Fi, and this is outstanding, 100 Wi-Fi units, mobile hotspots, 4G. It's great, because it's going to be able to bring the telecast to people around who have Wi-Fi, they can access it on their phone. They could see that members of the public, like myself, are reduced to a fraction of the size of the way ordinary. For example, all the honorees, that was very touching and beautiful about the rest- For example, all the honorees, that was very touching and beautiful about the restaurants and the immigrants, we very much appreciate that. But we should also see the Teamsters and the individuals in the public in the same-sized frame, as is appropriate according to the law, and also to just common decency. So I would ask you to take an action in that direction. Item 32, we have Historic Highland Park, is getting a little contribution, a little extra contribution of $6,000 to get the mosaic tile project going. And Mr. Sadio should own that. We do appreciate it. There's also an open space, little how-do-do in CD1. We're getting some kind of acquisition of a small bit of land from a group called Northeast Trees. We're going to dedicate it to open space, so it's hard not to say thank you for that. Obviously, item number 34, you have the Sunshine Canyon landfill. This is money that is going to be deployed, $100,000, to the LAPD, which, this is for community benefit. So, you know, LAPD could be a community benefit, but it's quite arch for someone like England or to buy a police car and throw $50,000 on the pile, when there are many needs that would be accommodated in addition to that out in Devonshire. I don't know. I mean, he does what he wants, and if people are happy with it in that district, I suppose that is acceptable. In 30, item number 35 is in my district, and we've got a, it's Landale, east of Coldwater. And what they're doing there, it's interesting, actually. It's a final track map on Coldwater. Coldwater is a hotly disputed subject in our district, because it's the area where they're considering a skybridge and 750-space parking lot for Edgar Colodians' client Harvard Westlake, and also that lobbyist Sunken. You can't, you can find Sunken, not today, but you'll see Mr. Lee, your, not Mr. Lee, Mr. Bai, Michael Bai, your former lobbyist, is swirling around today out there. This is, we feel the energy of the bulldozers beginning on this project, but we were assured by our council member that it's not happening immediately, so there was some comfort there. And he even articulated that they may be forced to reconsider, given all the resistance in our community to that kind of an onerous and appalling project. Item number two, sir, is the Ethics Commission is going to bring a little love to the individual. They've signed off on him. But the Ethics Commission has been doing a very, very bad job of showing up.
Mr. President, I don't believe the speaker signed up for item number two.
Okay, let's go to general public.
I don't think that's in dispute.
Let's just go to general public.
I'm happy to cooperate, sir. I want you to know that the USA Today wrote a very powerful article, and the LA Times editorial board followed, pointing out that the way the hard men and women who work at the ports on the short-haul routes are being treated abhorrently. It is beyond the pale. There are lots of workers who are being treated not as employees as they should be, with basic conditions, including the minimum wage and everything else. But in fact, they're being asked to shepherd the cost of the zero-mission goal that we all share, but it's not fair to put it on these workers. And they need to be taken care of. And this city, Mr. Buscagino is sympathetic, I know you're all sympathetic to them, but it's time to do something about it. They have been struggling, and these are Angelinos who deliver the stuff that feeds all of the people and all the equipment and stuff that runs this great city, and they ought to be treated fairly. The end consumer, unfortunately, is the one who has to help us get to zero-mission, and it is time, sir. So you are the leader, you're a man who can get things done, it's time to step up and help these folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corretts, we're going to go to item two. If we could, please come forward, have a seat. It's good to see you.
You too. Good morning, Mr. President, council members.
Mr. Corretts.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We took an unusual step and moved this recommendation forward without a recommendation, and not out of any disrespect for the candidate, who is well-qualified and well-respected, but out of a desire to have an opportunity to discuss the assumptions of rate of return. I think it is my belief, and that of some members of the City Council, unfortunately, most of them are in back taking pictures with their honorees, so they won't hear this discussion. But the question of the assumptions and rate of return, it's my belief that we take an overly conservative viewpoint on this. When we reduce the rate of return assumptions, it adds by the tens of millions of dollars general fund contributions to our pensions that I believe are unnecessary, and remove that from our budget. When we hit difficult budget times, that may mean the layoffs of hundreds of city workers. If you look at our past rates of return, as recently as 2014, here are the numbers on our investment rates of return. One year, 18.4%, three years, 11%, five years, 13.6%, 10 years, 7.8%, 20 years, 8.7%, and 30 years, 10.2%. So as recently as then, we had very positive rates of return. We've had a couple of years that have been low recently, including 2016. I have to believe those are economic anomalies. We hit those points every once in a great while. But to make those assumptions based on that, I think is very problematic. And when we discussed it with you, you had no openness to considering those issues whatsoever, and just said, well, we have a fiduciary duty, this is a somewhat automatic thing that we have to do. I believe you can consider the fiduciary duty to employees when they're still employees as well, and this is, that this is a very harmful step to cut. And we don't even know how far the cut is. I believe the police and fire pensions went down to 7.25. Lasers could go even lower. Certainly, I would like to hear from you that you have some openness to considering those issues, and especially not dropping below 7.25 and doing more damage to our budgetary process.
Thank you. With all due respect, I don't believe that I made any comments as to any positions that had been set. We have regularly scheduled reviews of our assumed rate of return every three years. This is that third year, and that discussion is coming before the board on July, our first meeting in July. LA FPP did recently move on this. However, we have our national consulting actuary who will be coming in, along with our national investment advisors, and our internal chief investment officer and his staff, who will all be weighing in on what they perceive to be the future market projections. 10 years moving forward, a lot of the national discourse has been that the achievable rates of return would be about 6.5%. If you take that into account with the previous 20 years of Lasers' return, which averages about 7.3%, that is a 7% return. That's not to say that that's what our actuary will come forward with. We, as a board, of course, hire experts to advise us on what they really see the future market cycle being, and provide us with a recommendation. No decisions have been made at all, no ranges or percentages have been made at all. They could very well come back and say it should stay the same, and the board will always take that into advisement.
So what'd they tell you three years ago?
To lower.
And that was based on?
That was based on the future projections of what the market would be, and it has sort of, as you said, you know, the 2014 numbers vary drastically from numbers from last year, where many funds returned well under 1%. And because of that, we can't exist in an environment where the city's contribution could be in flux. Some years, if the boards return 18%, there would be very little city contribution. Other years, when it's under 1%, the contribution would be unpayable. Because of that, all of these funds exist, looking at a 20- to 30-year investment horizon, and having a smooth and less volatile-as-possible expectation for the city to be able to manage the budget.
So if you look at a 30-year return, even our 30-year return, even including these two very bad years that we've just had, is 8.4. So how do we take that into account? Do we take into account past history, or do we just get moved by these changing two years?
We take that into account. Of course, this projection of 6.5% is looked at over the next 10 years. We've been in extremely low interest rate environment for a very long time, low inflation. Because of that, that's why these numbers are coming back a little bit more conservative. And that does need to be taken into account, because that will impact the amount of money that needs to go in to sustain the promises made by the employer to tens of thousands of current and retired city employees.
So we had a low inflation environment in 2013 and 2014, yet we averaged 16% plus between those two years. So how does that all fit in?
Some of those numbers are taken into account from private equity harvesting, too, which happens from investments that took place seven to 10 years before that. One of the things that we did see was throughout the global financial crisis, many pension funds actually stopped investing, which was very harmful, because now we're in a period where some funds who did continue to invest in some of those vehicles are harvesting much greater returns, but we sat out. And I think the whole premise of a public pension fund having a 30-year horizon is that we invest at a consistent commitment pace to ensure that we have smooth returns and can weather the storms up or down as we move forward, as opposed to reacting to what the market is doing on a two-year, three-year, four-year basis.
Well, I think that part's good. The numbers, I think, only really meet your projections if you look at the last two years. If you take that out, I would think this was an overly conservative act, and I think this is an anomaly, and I think we'll be doing much better than the figures we're using. So I'd hope you'd take that into account, particularly the impact on current employees. And again, if we actually had an economic downturn, this action would result in layoffs of hundreds of employees, potentially.
Of course. And I think everybody agrees, we don't want to see harmful impacts to the budget or to employee participation. We serve the employees and the retirees of the City of Los Angeles. At the same time, it is part of our fiduciary duty to make sure we ensure the long-term health of the plan, to make sure that all of the promises that have been given to the tens of thousands of city employees, 45,000 under Lasers with the retirees included, are able to be kept up despite, you know, maybe lower, higher contributions a couple of years now, or lower new hires, or lower raises in the interim years.
I would just hope that you would consider fiduciary duty to current employees as well as you make this decision.
Of course.
Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you. I'm heartened by some of the comments that you've just made, but I do want to thank Mr. Corretts for raising the issue that I raise all the time as well, and should always be an important part of our discussion whenever we're talking about our pension funds. And I'm especially heartened by your discussion of the long-term investment horizon and the need for smoothing the volatility of returns. And that argument is often lost on people who say, well, the city is assuming, or the pension funds are assuming this rate of return, but last year, we only realized 3% in the stock market. That's a nonsense argument, because whether it's 3% last year or 18% last year is entirely irrelevant to the kind of investment horizon that a pension fund should be looking at. And I do take a little issue with the comments that were made during our budget hearings by Lasers, and that I'm hearing you repeating right now about the 10-year forward projection combined with the 20-year retrospective analysis, which is a little bit of cherry-picking, I think, to say, let's take those 20 years and the next 10 years, and then, because the truth is, that if you look at any 30-year horizon, any 30-year horizon of any 30-year span since the, before the Great Depression, any 30-year span in that time, the stock market has well exceeded our assumed rate of returns. If you look at any 30-year span in the history of our pension funds, this fund has, in fact, exceeded these returns over that amount of time. Pick any 30 years at random, and the actual returns realized by the fund exceed what we're assuming. So this argument that some make out there in the blogosphere, that we should be following some private sector model, is nonsense. We're not a private sector pension fund. We are a public sector pension fund, and fundamentally different economic principles apply, because unlike Lehman Brothers, we will not lock our doors one day, stop revenues from coming in, and leave our employees on the streets to fend for themselves. That will never happen with government and with government pension funds. So a different economic analysis has to apply. So thank you, Mr. Corretts, for raising the issues. The one thing that I would, I guess, add as a question and a comment would be, while I certainly respect and recognize the board member's fiduciary duty to the retirees and to ensuring the sustainability of our pension funds, I would just add that that fiduciary duty applies more broadly than just picking an assumed rate of return, which is only one component of the larger issue of sustainability of the pension funds. And other components will include reduction of investment fees and administrative costs, for example. It might include a more robust analysis of the portfolio to ensure greater returns are realized, instead of just taking the somewhat easier step of reducing the assumed rate of return. So I would hope that the board has been taking those steps. I know that there has been effort to reduce fees, for example, and I'd like you to talk a little bit about that. But I'd also like to hear a little bit about whether you think it might be appropriate to examine the range of investments that are currently being made, to see whether it might be feasible to realize greater returns than have historically been achieved, given the commitments to a conservative, prudent investment strategy.
Absolutely. I wish I had a pen, because you did say a lot. It is true that the 30-year returns are well above the averages. One caveat to that is, we only have data going back to 1983. So in the 30-year period since then, that has held. As far as the fees, we do implement a third-party CEM benchmarking to review all of the fees and to make sure that we are getting that additional alpha for the money that we are paying. Periodically, they come in and do an audit of that. In 2015 was the last time that they did that. Lasers has performed better on net return for some of these types of investment vehicles. The net value added is higher than the U.S. median for pension funds, and the cost of our fees is lower on average than what U.S. other pension funds are paying. And because of that, you know, we see that value, as you said, achieving additional alpha on a risk-adjusted basis is critical, and having access to funds that are better performing, even if we have smaller allocations to them, which Lasers has been able to achieve over the last three years of our private equity portfolio, higher average returns net of fees than, which is able to increase our overall assumed rate of return. As you said, that is only one small piece of it. Even if we weren't to touch the assumed rate of return this year, it is likely that the city's contribution will begin to tick up because of our mortality experience. City employees after retirement are living longer than expected, which is great, but that does put pressure on the benefits that are paid to people who live longer. And on top of that, we're in a very uncertain market of healthcare costs. And depending on what happens with that as well, we have to be prepared for all of those changes. And that, I agree completely, that the assumed rate of return is only one piece of that puzzle. Lasers does the best it can with an excellent department to negotiate down our healthcare premiums, so that they are consistently lower. We go out to market all the time, and we have seen those numbers come down over the last couple of years. But there are external forces within the markets that influence how the investment horizon is viewed, and we have to take that into account, these national trends. So we're very open to hearing what our consultants have to say, what they really feel the market is going to do over the next 10, 15, 20 years. Our actuary will come in and present all of those numbers from a demographic standpoint of what they view mortality tables will be, and also on the investment side.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer, and thank you for raising the issue of healthcare costs, because this is the part of the equation that most of the discussion out in the public usually leaves out. And the truth is, as we look historically at the city's increasing contribution to the pension funds, the bulk of what's driving that is really spiking healthcare costs. And I know that you have, that the board has done its best to try to bring those costs down, but they, as they are across the country, are escalating at a rate much more rapid than inflation, much more rapid than the growth of our workforce, the increase in cost of our healthcare for retirees is the, if not the principle, it's certainly one of the principal drivers of that increased contribution. And so I would just urge you and the other board members to just urge you and the other board members to continue to work with us and with the mayor to try to achieve reduction in those, or reduction in the rate of increase of those healthcare costs, which will probably get even more difficult if the actions in Congress right now are successful. So it's something that we're certainly going to have to pay considerable attention to.
And I'd also like to note that the actuarial medical trend rate has been about 8.8 percent a year, but the increases to Lasers' medical costs have been about 4.8 percent. So we've been able to manage those costs at far below the rate that healthcare costs are increasing nationwide. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. Let's, members, let's prepare to vote on this. Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Mr. President, a motion is required for this.
It's been moved and seconded. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations on something else as well. Let's recess the regular and go into the special. Madam Clerk.
Bloomingville, Bonham, Buscagino, Sedia, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Kretz, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrow, Price, Rue, Wesson, 12 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, let's go to item 39. Did Mr. Kretz or Mr. Krikorian, did you want to say anything on this? Or Mr. Kretz, did you?
Yeah, I just want to call it special.
Well, it's special and it's up now.
Oh, okay. I just had a question about who is covered by the Justice Fund and where we draw the line. I know there's been some discussion relating to felons. I want to be sure that we have a clear picture of who we're protecting and who we're not protecting.
Okay, well, a lot of work has been going into this, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Krikorian at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The matter has been, this matter's been heard, of course, by the Ad Hoc Committee on Immigrant Affairs as well as the Budget and Finance Committee. Budget and Finance considered the CAO's report at length and asked for some additional reports from the CAO to the council today. So there is a motion that's being circulated, if it hasn't already been circulated, to modify the language of the CAO report and recommendations. But I would move the, I would move the Budget and Finance Committee's report as it is to be amended by the motion that's now being circulated. So I would move that, and then as the motion is being circulated, perhaps the CAO and/or other staff might be able to come forward to respond to Mr. Kretz's question.
Okay, let's have, let's have the CAO staff come forward, and I want to call on Mr. Sedia. Mr. Sedia?
Do you want to hear from them first?
Okay, go right ahead. Floor is yours, Yolanda.
Good morning, Yolanda Chavez with the CAO. The item before you, do you want me just to respond to the question or give it over?
I think responding to the question would be appropriate.
Sure. So when the report was considered on Monday by the Budget and Finance Committee, the committee asked us to clarify the criminal history exclusion language in our original report, which is dated March 30th. And the language in the original report is on page four of the report. The committee, the Budget and Finance Committee, asked that we make it so a legal provider would have to make an affirmative finding that someone has a meritorious claim. If they have the criminal history, it's outlined in the report, and that they make that finding and document the finding. So what we're proposing, and I think the report was released early yesterday afternoon, so I hope you all have a copy of that, it basically clarifies the language, and we think that addresses a concern that a legal services provider would find or make an affirmative finding of a meritorious claim for a potential Justice Fund beneficiary to be excluded from the criminal history provision. So if I could read that, and then I think Mr. Krikorian has an amendment to our language, but, so the clarifying language we're proposing is that funds provided under this contract, awarded pursuant to this section, may not be used to provide legal services to an individual who has a final conviction for a violent felony as defined in subdivision C of Section 667.5 of the Penal Code, and/or a final conviction for human trafficking, child abuse, domestic violence, and/or pimping. So the next clause is the language we added to clarify the need for an affirmative finding. The next clause says, except if the legal services provider, one, determines that an individual with a final conviction for a crime listed above has a potentially meritorious claim for immigration relief or defense from removal, and, two, makes an affirmative finding of such potentially meritorious claim, then the provider may allow the otherwise excluded person to access the services provided by the Los Angeles Justice Fund. This affirmative finding must be documented in writing and included as part of the program reporting requirements. So we think this way we could track exactly how many of these claims are actually made and what the outcome of each case is. I believe Mr. Krikorian's motion removes the word "final" from both "final conviction" in that first section. And I believe that's the only change in terms of the language, which would basically mean that anybody who is appealing a conviction would also not be eligible unless they have a meritorious claim and an affirmative action or affirmative finding is made by the legal services provider.
Let me go, before you respond, Mr. Kretz, let me go to Mr. Sedia.
Members, I speak in favor of the motion. I await more clarity on the amendments, but I think it's important for us to note today, as we've done, talking about Immigrant Heritage Month, that this action taken by the city is historic, that this city is the only city that's stepping up, that's putting up millions of dollars to defend immigrants. We are at a point where we must do all that we can to defend immigrants that are under attack and assault by the Trump administration, and this fund will do all that we can to provide sanctuary for immigrants in the city. We will utilize the legal process to defend and to frustrate, to defend immigrants and to frustrate the Trump administration at their efforts. There is no place for ICE in the City of Los Angeles. I ask you to join me tomorrow as we organize and campaign against ICE in CD-1. The presence of ICE is disruptive to the very social fabric of the city. It's disruptive to the economic foundation of the city, and it has no place here. What belongs here in the city and in our nation is immigration reform. We must have immigration reform. We need to build bridges, not walls. We should have immigration reform, and it will address the security concerns that people have. It'll provide an orderly process for people to come and go to our nation. Let me say that we have a pilot project that bears this out to be true. Today, 895,000 immigrants have applied successfully for a California driver's license. What does that say? That says, given an opportunity to live here legally, given the mechanisms to participate in the society legally, immigrants will do that. And so we need to stop disrupting the social fabric of our communities, and we need to stop the hateful rhetoric. We need to stop the talk about building walls, and we need to move forward about building bridges. And this Justice Fund does that. It contributes to the immigrant community, knowing that this City of Los Angeles is doing all that it can to make sure that immigrants are respected, that their rights are protected, and that they have a place in the city. And so I applaud the initiative. I look for a little more clarity on the amendments, but I understand the amendments, Mr. Krikorian. I understand the amendments to say that we are simply asking the attorneys to do what they do every day, is to make a decision on the meritorious claim. In other words, we are not limiting them. We're simply saying, it is for you to make this decision. And it's a decision that people make every day, whether you work for the ACLU or the UCLA Labor Center or for Legal Aid. I know my experiences with those organizations, that they evaluate all cases to determine whether or not they should go forward. This is what attorneys do each and every single day. No one is prohibited from representing immigrants, should they want to pursue a case that has no merit. But for us, we recognize that this is a guide to attorneys who will be evaluating these cases to say, use your best judgment. This is not a fund that's unlimited, but rather this is a fund that has its limits. And in the interests of the immigrant community, we must be strategic, we must be responsible, we must be effective. And we are asking that the attorneys who we offer these resources to, to do the same. That it is their burden, their responsibility, and their obligation in the interest of representing and protecting immigrants in the city to be just that, strategic, effective, and responsible in representing them. And for that, we give them a guide to make sure that the claims that they invest these limited resources are with merit, and we trust their judgment, their training, their history, and their preparation to do just that. And thank you.
I'm going to go to Mr. Kretz and then Mr. Krikorian. I'm going to let you. So let's go. In fact, no, I want to go now. We have to go to Mr. Englander, because he hasn't spoken, then we'll go to Mr. Rue. Mr. Englander?
Thank you very much, colleagues. Not going to speak in favor or not of the proposal, but I am going to say that my feeling, and while I'll be voting no, is in looking at this, just, I'm just not sure that this is, for me, the best use of taxpayer funds. And I do believe that, and strongly believe that, these funds, without question, are needed. But I also believe the philanthropic community, while they're stepping up on this, could all be achieved with that. In fact, just personally, I've gone out and raised over $6 million to build a homeless shelter that many of you have been to and helped with that with no taxpayer funds. So another $5 million to build an at-risk youth center and more. But I just wanted to share that, rather than just voting no, and wanted to let you know where it was coming from. Thank you.
Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, just regarding the meritorious claim, can you explain what constitutes a meritorious claim?
So I'm going to ask the city attorney, Mike Dundas, to come forward.
Councilmember, it's a complex process in immigration court. There are certain crimes that make a person ineligible for relief from removal, but there are built-in-of-the-process waivers to that. And, for example, an asylum waiver, undue hardship waiver, and it's a, there's a series of factors that go to how one might determine whether or not, and there's, you know, there's case precedent, there's case law that dictates how to weigh these factors, and whether or not the person may have a meritorious claim, even though they have a crime on their record.
So, I mean, I don't understand it. So if someone's been convicted of child molestation, then how would they be exempt? I mean, how would this Justice Fund still be able to support?
Well, the justice, the language of the motion that was passed around, which was moved by Councilmember Krikorian, states that if the attorney providing the legal services to the fund comes across a person who would be excluded because of that criminal record, but then is able to make an affirmative finding that despite that criminal history, the weight of the factors in favor of a waiver, which, again, is very hard to be granted or hard to obtain, show that they have a meritorious chance of getting that, then they would be, despite the criminal record, be able to get access to the fund's legal services.
So it's very, I should add that it's very difficult to receive a meritorious claim or be able to prove that. But I guess the best example that we heard from some of the legal services providers is the case of a human trafficking victim who was then forced to participate in a robbery. And that was actually a real case, that they represented this person and were successful in proving that she had a meritorious claim.
Okay. Just to give you an idea, the factors we're talking about here, the balancing factors, it's residents in the U.S., family members that rely on you, whether they be, you have minor U.S. citizen children, the service to the community, all those types of things that you'd normally think of as what would be somebody who's contributing, member of society. And then alternatively weighing against that on the other side of the scale is the nature of the crime, the nature of the offense, the, whether there's been repetitive crime, criminal activity, that kind of thing, yeah?
And the language also states that the legal services provider will be making this decision. So the city and the county, we would have no oversight?
Well, they would have to report on exactly, as the motion reads, we are asking them to make the affirmative finding and document that, because any attorney has to do that, right? They have to be able to review the case, make the decision whether they could actually prove a meritorious claim. And so, yes, they would make that finding and document it. And as we're tracking the reporting on the program, we would be able to assess if, you know, to be honest, I don't anticipate that we'll see a lot of these, but it's important to track that, because then we can come report back and tell you exactly what we, you know, what we're receiving in terms of the reporting.
Okay. And lastly, you know, SB 6, current version of SB 6, the draft language struck, has taken out the meritorious claim, and the County of Los Angeles recently passed, this past Tuesday, language without the meritorious claim as well. So how would that be administered if the city contribution part allows for it? So how would that work?
Well, I think, as you know, just like the city does, most of the service, legal services providers are used to tracking various sources of funding by that, by that source's specific regulations and requirements. So they would have to, if they're using city funds, would have to track based on our city requirements in terms of reporting. So they're, I think they're used to that, and like I said, I mean, the city has to do that with all of the different sources of funding that we receive. It's the same for a legal services provider.
So were there any additional costs, administrative costs associated with that?
Well, we're negotiating the administrative costs, but at this point, what the California Community Foundation has told us, that they're looking at basically taking 1 percent for administrative costs. So that's, that's a very cost-effective program.
Okay, well, you know, I'm just very concerned, because, you know, this is a $10 million fund, which is sorely needed, and we need this to go into effect immediately. But, you know, even with an average case, let's say, costing $5,000, we're pretty much about, able to serve 2,000 people. And, you know, we just had a press conference this morning, and just the API, Asian Pacific Islander communities alone, there's an estimated 130,000 undocumented APIs. And that's just one group. And so with this $10 million Justice Fund, which is historic and which is so forward-thinking and progressive, we're going to be able to maybe serve 2,000 people. So the point is, we have very limited resources, and we cannot, unfortunately, help everyone. And without castigating judgment on those with felony convictions, we need to prioritize these legal services. And it's, because it is super imperative that we succeed. It is imperative that this Justice Fund succeeds. And as an immigrant myself, you know, you know, I'm prepared to introduce a motion, I mean, an amendment to the motion, but I would like to wait to hear all the other arguments, Council President, if that's okay. But if you could come back to me?
So, Councilman, if I can just comment on the eligibility, because if you could keep in mind that this is basically a criminal history exclusion. So this is the language for the criminal history. So this is the language for the criminal history exclusion language. But in terms of eligibility to be a beneficiary, we outlined that in the initial report on page three. So beneficiaries have to be residents of the city, they have to have strong ties to the city, whether it's family members who are legal residents, U.S. citizens, DACA recipients, they have to be low-income, of course. And we also provide priority for heads of households, persons who may have humanitarian claims, and/or who are victims of crime. So that is really the eligibility criteria. This is just the criminal exclusion language.
Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think Mr. Ru articulated my concerns as well. And I have to say, I'm incredibly proud that we're doing this. The question is, how we prioritize? And the meritorious claim language isn't entirely clear to me. If it just means we think they might succeed, but they're folks that we wouldn't necessarily prioritize? If you might be a former murderer, and you're now, you've served your time and you're back on the street, are you among our top priority when we can only serve a certain number of people? Just because we might look at your case and say, well, we think we might be able to succeed with this? So that would make it meritorious? Or are there categories of folks for whom we don't want to supply this? Now, obviously, you have, you've given an example, which I think is a good example, of someone who is a convicted felon, but we probably would want to include someone who's forced into a robbery as part of a circumstance beyond their control. So we obviously would want some flexibility, but if it's just based on whether they can win their case, and we wouldn't necessarily want them to, or at least we wouldn't prioritize them, I would rather have someone that isn't a murderer, you know, allowed to be deported, and someone that's a head of a family and a hard-working person and active in our community, I'd rather serve them, given the choice. So where is the line? The meritorious claim language really isn't satisfactory for me.
So if I could just speak on the priority issue, because, again, this is not priority language. Priority language is, you're a resident of the city, you have strong ties to the city, you have family members who are residents, U.S. citizens, you're a head of household, right? That's a priority. This is just a criminal--
Right. But what I'm saying is, if you're someone who, however you prioritize it, should be at the absolute bottom of the list, because you're not necessarily someone we want to fight for. No matter how you prioritize it, they're at the bottom. So how do we, how do we deal with those issues?
Well, and I will have Mike speak on this, but I think that it's clear that someone who committed murder probably does not have a meritorious claim. And so if you look at the section, subsection C. 667.5, it's a very broad list of what is under that section. So it's not, it's unlikely that someone who's a murderer would ever have a meritorious claim. But I'll let him speak to that.
Well, I mean, what the CIO said is correct. The, I mean, to your specific question, the prioritization list is written into, would be written into the contract, per the instruction. And so the funds would go towards, the screening process that happens beginning would go towards prioritizing legal services for those who match those priorities. Veteran status, head of household, U.S. citizen children, that kind of thing. So the question may be, there may be in the middle, a conflict between somebody who has no prioritization, doesn't meet any of those categories, but does not have a criminal record, versus somebody who maybe meets, was a veteran, is the head of household, has a U.S. citizen children, and happens to have, as a young adult, a criminal record that would otherwise exclude them. The question may be there, is who do you prioritize in that circumstance? The person with no criminal record, or with none of the priorities, or the person with them and someone without? Because by the time you get to, given what everyone has said so far, the limited amount of funding, it's likely that they're, given the priorities that are be written in the contract, that there wouldn't be somebody who gets access to the funds with no priorities, status, and a criminal record, because they're just, the fund is insufficient.
Yeah, it still leaves me a little pause. I wish there was some way to say that someone that had a felony--
Look at your time, Mr. Kretz.
--would have some sort of extenuating circumstance required. I don't know what the language is, but, and I obviously don't want to vote against this, so I want some sense that we're not going to be serving the people that we wouldn't want to be serving.
And just to clarify, when I say the fund is insufficient, I mean to serve the entire class of people, as Mr. Ru, Councilmember--
Yes, yes, it is.
And I think that, just the term meritorious claim, I mean, you have to have some merit. So I think that the legal services providers here would agree that we, you wouldn't want a, a violent murderer would not, it would be unlikely they would have a meritorious claim, unless they were, you know, they could prove that they were falsely convicted, which does happen, as--
Right. I think there are plenty of circumstances--
Okay, Mr. Kretz, you have to push your button again. Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you all so much for doing the work on this. It's a proud moment to be an Angelina on this issue. I want to offer something that isn't so much a question as it is a comment, and that is, we talk about the criminal justice system as if it's perfect. So if someone has a criminal justice conviction, they deserved it. And that, that means that they shouldn't get help, or they should get help last. And that's just not the case. We send people who are immigrants to war. We send people who are immigrants to war. We send them into situations where people are shooting at them and they're shooting back. They come back here with PTSD. One of our police departments might arrest and convict them on a felony drug conviction. Are that, is that person not meritorious? They took, they were willing to take bullets for us? So I just think we gotta be a little bit careful, not talk about the criminal justice system as if it's perfect, and not try to come up with a situation that's gonna catch every bad situation. There are people on the ground, these people go face-to-face with attorneys. In general, if somebody's doing this kind of work, they're generally speaking a good person, they can make good judgments. So I would ask us to err on the side of reliance on the people who are actually doing the work on a day-to-day basis, and understand that it's a complex world, it's a complex situation. We are pushing back on an unjust system. We're fighting the immigration system, not because we want to help everybody who has something go wrong with them, we're fighting it because we think it's fundamentally unjust. And in order to do that, we can't fall into the same justice system that created that law.
Mr. Sadio.
I was preceded by Mr. Harris-Dawson, who was saying exactly what I wanted to say. The words ran out of my heart and my mind. We have an imperfect legal system. Mr. Kretz, where's Mr. Kretz? Mr. Kretz? Mr. Ru, I'm gonna try to see if I can give you comfort on this. Here's what we're trying to do. We have an imperfect legal system, and we're recognizing that. And we're saying, look, within an imperfect legal system, we are gonna allow attorneys to do what they're trained to do, is to make judgment whether or not a case has merit to be heard before a judge, a jurist, a magistrate. That's all that we're trying to do. Now, we could have the word conviction or final conviction, and know that that in itself is not determinative, right? So, for example, let's look at the case of Romolo. Romolo had his convictions for a felony, he drove with a DUI. And he drove what was considered receiving stolen property. There was a period for 20 years where immigrants could not get a driver's license in this state. And so all their activity related to that, driving somebody else's car, driving with a different number, a different social number, driving with a license, driving with a license they bought at MacArthur Park, driving a car that some, they bought tags for, made them a criminal. But guess what? That's no longer the law. So they have this criminal conviction, and then we want to say, look, that guy's a criminal. Should we let him stay? Well, let's just see what else are the merits of this. Well, he's a father. He has these incredible daughters. He has this incredible family. He's civically engaged. He has not engaged in any other criminal activity. So but for the imperfections of our laws, this man would have merit, and we would want him to be here in our community, in our society. And so all we're saying is, allow jurists, attorneys who have been trained to make these evaluations, to see, this guy's got a case or doesn't have a case, that's it. We have a young man who's running for the Assembly today. He was a final conviction in jail, right? They said he murdered somebody. But guess what we've learned, after the 20 years that he served? That he was innocent. Now, if Frank Icario had had his immigration status at issue here, and had been stopped, allow the jurist to say, before a judge, look, there was a mistake. In fact, we actually owed this man, because we kept him for 20 years, we took his liberty from him. Those are the imperfections that impact immigrants, as they do all of us, throughout the legal system, every single day. There is a veteran sitting here, who served our country, who put himself on the line to protect us, to protect our democracy. And all we're saying is, look, let's evaluate all, allow an attorney to make those evaluations. We're not making any judgment on it, we're just saying, look, let an attorney to evaluate. In the case where somebody has a conviction, just let the attorney say, hey, what else do you have to say here? What are your other merits? And what do you have to say about those convictions? In the case of Romolo, he says, look, yes, I had the DUI, but the seven years have passed, so it shouldn't be on my record. He went to a place to get it taken off his record, and the person, he was a victim of fraud. He went to a notarial, went to a notary, and said, look, take this off my record. Take the DUI off my record, and now I drive with a license legally, and take that off my record. And the guy said, sure, give me $10,000, no problem. And the guy took off. So this guy is a victim of fraud, but yet he still has those convictions. Should he not be able to present that to an attorney and say, hey, I want to stay here with my family, but for those two things, I have a clean record, I have this incredible family, there's no reason for you to take me from the car while I drop my daughter off at school, look at my wife, look at my family, look at my contributions? Shouldn't we at least allow that to be considered? That's all this amendment says. That's all it says. It's independent of the priorities, we have laid out the priorities, this man would qualify within, what are the priorities? And that's all we're saying. There are other cases where we'll look at somebody and allow an attorney, say, you know what? This is never gonna happen. This is a loser. There's no merits, and you've got this final conviction, and we consider plus your criminal activity to be abhorrent, reprehensible, and I'm not gonna recommend this case. Allow people who have been trained to make that decision to put that forward. That's all I'm saying. That's all we are saying. I think it's a valid amendment. I think it meets our concerns in terms of protecting immigrants within the law. It creates a scenario where immigrants can know that this city has committed to them, and that in the context of the imperfect law, the immigration laws, and our criminal justice laws, that this is the best that we can do, and we should do no less. Thank you.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to support Mr. Harris-Dawson and Mr. Sadio. As many of you know, I've not been particularly quiet about it, 23 years ago, I was doing crystal meth, every day.
Not for doing it, for not doing it.
Yeah. You know, I was most often locked in a room, by myself, breaking the law. I never got arrested, don't have a record, and frankly, that's a miracle. Because the number of times I bought drugs, the number of times I shared drugs, number of times before I started using drugs where I drove drunk, and risked my life and somebody else's, was huge. It's a miracle that I didn't get arrested, and it's a better miracle that I eventually got clean and sober. I wouldn't want my life to be judged by my darkest and weakest and stupidest moments. And I don't think we should judge others by their darkest, weakest, and stupidest moments. We're talking about folks who have committed an offense and have paid their dues, have served their time. You know, because I got sober, and I met a whole different universe of people who used to drink and who used to use drugs, some of my best friends in the world have felonies on their records. The person in the world I consider a role model for being a good father to my son, has a felony on his record. The guys that I look up to as role models on how to be stand-up guys have felonies on their records. Because they refuse to be defined by their weakest and stupidest, most destructive moment, and other people decided not to define them by those either. So their wives didn't define them by that, their kids don't define them by that, their current employers don't define them by that. I believe in redemption. And in this process, I believe that it is important that we not judge people by their mistakes, but by the whole of their life. And the way I understand this motion is that we are giving the discretion to the legal experts to judge someone by the whole of their life. And I think that's the right way to go. Thank you.
We'll go to Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gentlemen, how we got here was because I insisted on making sure that people who were convicted of raping someone, or abusing someone physically, were not able to access this money. And I've never made any secrets about how I felt about these issues. Anyone who has been convicted of human trafficking, anyone who has been convicted of raping a child, or a woman, or a man, and anyone who has domestic violence convictions, I have always felt very strongly should not have access to this fund. You know, my father was an immigrant, he passed away last year. My father was a dishwasher and rode the bus his entire life. He got deported three times. The last time he got deported was two days before my mom was gonna give birth to me. So he wasn't there with my mom when I was born, because he was deported. My father didn't have any convictions, and he lived an impeccable life. I was very lucky that I was brought up by a man like him. So those types of people, and the example that my dad led by, should have priority to representation. Not pedophiles, not rapists, and not abusers. That's how we got here today. And so I just want to make it very clear, as we stand up and talk about people restoring their lives, I would agree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Harris-Dawson, Mr. Sadio, and Mr. Bonin, I agree, people deserve a check and stance. But someone who's been molested, someone who's been raped, does not get a second chance. Their lives are completely destroyed, and those people never get to reform themselves. And that's why we got here today, because I really believe that we need carve-outs and make sure these people don't get ahead of the line. They don't deserve representation when someone's been living their lives according to, you know, working hard and making sure they provide for their families. There's millions of people like this in this country. But pedophiles do not get to get in front of the line. And that's how we got here. And so I stand with you, and I know there's been, there's been so much controversy, there's been people calling my office, I've met with countless of activists and advocates, and if they want to, if the professionals and the attorneys, which I am not, want to represent someone who's been convicted for pedophilia or rape, they can go ahead and do that. Nothing prohibits them from representing anybody pro bono. But as long as I get a vote on this council, I will not support our money going towards representations of people who've been convicted for these malicious, horrible crimes on others. And that's how we got here. And so I, excuse me? I'm not speaking--
No, wait a minute, wait, wait a minute. No, wait, Miss, hold on, Ms. Martinez. Mr. Spindler-- Mr. Spindler, Sergeants, eject him for disrupting. You cannot engage in a conversation when a member is speaking, when you, no, take him out right now. Take, no, Sergeants, I want him out right now. Move.
Thank you, Mr. President. This man does not get to interrupt me when I'm speaking.
Move, move. He's still, Mr. Attorney, he is still disrupting this committee hearing. Mr. Spindler, exit the building. Ms. Martinez, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I just want to end with that. I think we've been, you know, this has been a struggle for some of us, both, I sit on the Immigration Committee with Mr. Sadio, I also sit on the Budget Committee with Mr. Corrigan. I struggle with this, because like I said earlier in my earlier remarks, there are people who have tried to restore their lives and live a good, be able to turn their lives around, and I don't want to get in the way of that. But these three particular convictions are personal for me. I believe that we need to do more to protect kids and women in this country, and so I just, I stand with that. And I think this is a compromise that a lot of us, it's difficult to think that maybe these people can get ahead of the line, but I want to make sure that we protect as many people as we can, and give people that deserve the representation faster, so that they can continue to live here in this country and continue to, you know, provide for their families. So, thank you.
Mr. Attorney, given what you've heard, I have a question where it relates to, we still, if we still want to accomplish some of the things that Mr. Sadio, Mr. Harris-Dawson referenced, if there's a way to balance this, could we add some kind of a priority language or something like that? Have we discussed that? And I don't even know how that would read, but maybe that's a way to elevate comfort levels, I don't know.
Mr. Counsel President, there will be priority language included in the contract with CCF, that CAO can actually read the specific factors that prioritize folks, it's in the proposed report.
Why don't we just hear what this, what your, the contract, the contract language?
Right, so in the original report, we outline what the priorities would be, and of course, first, eligible applicants would have to be residents of the city, with a preference to individuals with community ties to Los Angeles, including family members who are U.S. citizens, lawful permanent residents, and deferred action for childhood arrivals for DACA recipients. They would have to be low-income, below 200% of the federal poverty level, and then, and once they meet those requirements, the priority, we still have priority language that would go to people that have humanitarian claims, who are heads of households, so the breadwinners of the family, and who have dependent children, young adults who arrived as children, veterans, individuals with protection-based claims, and all victims of crimes, victims of domestic violence, victims of human trafficking, and all individuals who are entitled to protection under international treaty obligation and other immigration laws. So those are the priorities, and that's how we would draft the contract with the California Community Foundation, to ensure that these people have priority for the funds. And again, as Mike explained, if, for example, there's a veteran who maybe is a priority because he meets all of these requirements, but may have some type of conviction, then they would have to review the case and assess whether they have a meritorious claim. And then if they do, they would make that affirmative finding based on the amended language and document that language. If they don't, then they wouldn't be able to represent that person, because if they're a convicted felon.
Okay, Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. It's interesting, because I find myself agreeing with almost everybody who's spoken so far, and I don't find that in conflict with what's before us as a motion, as the amended motion. Because what was originally in the CAO report was basically the removal of the conviction, the carve-out, saying you can't, you can't have access if you're convicted unless the legal services providers determine the individual has no meritorious claim. And the Budget Committee went back and forth on that and said, "Well, that is a little bit too, just too much discretion, because they're never going to take on a case that doesn't have meritorious claim." So we talked about creating a higher bar, where the onus is actually on the attorney to say, "Yeah, not only is it, this is an extenuating circumstance, as Mr. Kretz said, it's a meritorious claim, therefore, I'm going to sign off, I'm going to put my name, and I'm going to put the reason why someone who would otherwise be carved out would be allowed." So it creates, instead of a just blanket removal, it creates a separate circumstance where the onus becomes on the attorney to make that decision. Which is a way to make sure that, because none of us want to see the rapist, or the child molester, or any of those folks getting access to these funds when we have such limited amount of funding. So, I see that as a carve-out, maybe there's a way to make that even more clear by adding something like, "End justifiable extenuating circumstance," something to that effect, because I understand the concern that meritorious claim is not always linked to the criminal nature of the crime. So a meritorious claim could be, "I have a family, I'm a veteran, and all of the reasons that make me a priority are also what make me potentially have merit." And what the Council, many members of the Council are saying is, "We also want to make sure that if there's going to be an extenuating circumstance, it has to be like the example that you brought up. It has to have this extenuating circumstance that leads it to be a meritorious claim." And I think that's where the confusion is coming in, because people are looking at meritorious as potentially having nothing to do with the crime that was committed. So maybe adding the words "extenuating circumstance," want to get your thoughts on doing something to that, to add an extra belt and suspenders to what is already a belt and suspenders?
Yeah, I'll have, the CAO can speak to the policy. Just one thing with respect to the legal analysis, going back to your, even your questions in committee, sir. Meritorious claim, I can read you a language from, as I mentioned to Councilmember earlier, there's an extensive amount of case law in this area as to what ends up being justifiable undue hardship for relief from removal. And they're cited to again and again in regular, in future cases as precedent. And so, an example of one of the relief opinions, the court noted that even in a showing of exceptional and extremely unusual hardship, which means all the extenuating circumstances we're talking about, that moment may be inadequate to justify a grant of relief, depending on the nature of the crime. The more serious the crime, the harder it is to prove that you have a meritorious case, no matter how extenuating your circumstances you are, to use your word. And so that, there's, even the courts do the balance there, and there's guidance with the people, to the people who are making these decisions, would be under the Justice Fund, that can say whether or not, depending on the nature of the crime, that there is an opportunity to access these funds, in terms of adding it to the policy.
So, yeah, I guess I see the languages as the same, because it would have to be, especially if, as Mike said, you're convicted of violent crime, it would have to be, you would have to have a really strong case to prove you have some type of meritorious claim. And so I think that's the type of judgment the attorneys would be making, especially with the type of limited funding that we have, right? And the priorities that are laid out in terms of who should be served.
I think that's the case. Part of this is the perception issue, and, you know, we don't want it out there on all, you know, this perception that this money is going to be going to folks with these criminal records, and if they have some, all this, they have, you know, a large family in this area, and that gives them a meritorious claim, it doesn't. I understand that, and you're saying that it doesn't. And we're trying to make that very clear, that that's not what meritorious claim means. So inasmuch as we can make that clear, I mean, I'm comfortable with the motion as it's written, but if we needed to make it even more clear, I'd be fine with adding additional words to talk about extenuating circumstance, to make it clear that that's not the case. But, as I said, I think the amendment here serves all of the interests that I've heard expressed, in terms of creating the flexibility, but also making sure that we are not using our precious resources on folks who we feel have committed heinous crimes and shouldn't be getting it. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio.
So I think, I agree with Bob. Let me say this, in summary, I think what we have here is, one, we do have priorities, and those priorities are laid out. And so, this model member of our community that Mr. Martinez was, would be at the top of the list. He would be at the top of the list, there's no question about it. And it does not, it does not prioritize anybody who's engaged in criminal activity that we consider heinous. It does not. And so I think it strikes the balance that we're looking for, because it makes clear to us what our values are and what our commitments are, and it makes clear to us what we find abhorrent. And I think we should be clear to the attorneys who will participate in this program, that those are our intentions. That we recognize that these are limited funds, that we have to be strategic, we have to be effective, and that by laying out what those priorities are, we know that Mr. Martinez would be at the front of the line, and be given the opportunity to remain with his family, to remain here because his daughter is a U.S. citizen, because of his strong family ties, because he's a resident of L.A., et cetera, that all those things would put him at the front of the list, and would not prioritize anybody who's engaged in activities that we found to be heinous. These are decisions that lawyers will ultimately have to make, but I think we've laid out the guidelines in this motion, and I think we've also made clear our intent, that these are limited resources, these are the resources of the City of Los Angeles, and that we ask them to utilize them with all the prudence and care that we do in terms of us making any expenditure on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Mr. Kretz, did you still, we may have a solution to this?
Well, I'm a little more comfortable after this discussion, or I should say, a little less uncomfortable. But I think Mr. Blumenfield articulated exactly where I would feel comfortable, which would be requiring that there would be an extenuating circumstance before we include felons in this category. So if we can find a way to word that, I would be the happiest and would be a certain vote. Otherwise, I'm still struggling with the issue.
Okay, you know, what I would like to do is ask for Mr. Blumenfield, just if you would rise one more time and restate those two words that you thought could help clarify, then we may be able to proceed.
Okay, specifically, and I don't think it really changes what we're doing here, it just makes, it helps clear up the perception. One, potentially on paragraph one, after number one, it says, "Determines an individual with a conviction for a crime listed above has," you could say, "a justifiably extenuating circumstance, and potentially meritorious claim for immigration relief." And then you could again add it in number two, when it says, "Makes an affirmative finding of such potentially meritorious claim and extenuating circumstance, then the provider may utilize." So if you add the two extenuating circumstance, it will force the attorney to actually have to document that there is an extenuating circumstance, and that is clearly part of the meritorious claim, but it will give more comfort to all of us who want to make sure that this, that we're being very clear, and we're not, you know, we're not just blanketly letting folks in who have certain convictions.
Mr. President.
Okay, Mr., I think we have this together, but I want to recognize Mr. Weisar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify with our city attorney that sometimes in legal terms of art, a certain word means a certain thing. We may define it differently when we use it in everyday language, but in casework and everything else, it means something else. So, question number one, do you think, or are you aware of any language, that if we use extenuating circumstances, that it would mean something else than we're interpreting it here? And if we are adding that word, does that mean we have to define it ourselves, or are we creating some ambiguity with adding that language, the extenuating circumstances?
I do not, generally, the terms are exceptional or unusual hardship that were used in these cases, and so I do not think extenuating circumstances would lock us into any definition that would be used in these proceedings. And I don't think that it would need to be defined by the council.
They do, or they don't need to be defined?
It would not.
Would not, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. But do you think that's clear enough, or we're not creating, well, you said there's two other words that are used in criminal law more often than not to kind of describe what we're trying to do here, but you don't think we're creating any type of ambiguity, and this should be fine to achieve our goals here?
Well, I think the record, given the discussion, is clear that the extenuating circumstances we're talking about are similar to the priorities that are listed in the contract.
Okay.
And that it would require the attorney, in this instance, who would be possibly providing legal service to a type of person who meets the standard, to identify those priorities.
Okay, and the testimony we've had here by the debate and discussion by the council members is sufficient enough to create a legislative record, such that if this does go to court or needs to be interpreted, we can look at these proceedings to see what we mean by it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what I want to do, Mr. City Attorney, do you want to clarify the suggested amendment by Mr. Blumenfield? I will second it.
So the friendly amendment would add some clarifying language, just to make the intent clear. In the first recommendation, the sentence that begins, "However," would read, "However, if the legal service provider, one, determines that an individual with a conviction for a crime listed above has a justifiable extenuating circumstance, and a potentially meritorious claim for immigration relief or defense or removal, and, two, makes an affirmative finding of justifiable extenuating circumstance of such potentially meritorious claim, then the provider may utilize the funding provided and continue along."
And since it is a friendly amendment, there's no need for a second. So, members, we will, we've already satisfied public comment on this issue, so let us vote. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
That's approved. It's my understanding we can adjourn the special?
Mr. President?
Item 40, there'll be no action on item 40?
Yes, sir.
I'll let the city attorney explain.
Yeah, just to clarify, on item 40, it's substantively identical to an item that the council adopted on Wednesday, so there's no reason to take up the item.
Okay, so this adjourned to special and return to the regular. Can we call up Mr. John Walsh? Items 1B, C, 31, 32, 33, 35, A, 40, public comment. Okay, if we could keep it down so we can continue with our business. Okay, start Mr. Walsh's clock.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or @JWalshConfidential, tweeting @HollywoodDems. Number one, again, a building in safety, you're doing a good job in building in safety. I'm not one of those white guys, "Oh, presser crooks, oh, they're going to jail." When you do a good job, I say you do a good job. I'm not that white. Number 31, this is accepting a donation for 4G mobile hotspots. I don't know why we have to go and beg people for mobile hotspots, but remember, when this company does- company does a favor for you folks up there, you'll be doing lots and lots and lots of favors for them. That's the way the game is played here. Number thirty-two, this is Tile Mosaic Project. This is the most important thing. Department of Transportation, six thousand dollars' worth of, accept a contribution of six thousand dollars' worth of tile. That's what you're spending your time on. That's after the two hours of nauseating litany of self-congratulation that we had to listen to. Number thirty-three, this is Parks and Recs. Northeast trees to be used as open space. Thirty-four, this is Department of Car and Other Crime Reduction Efforts. Oh, this is what Englander, he only, hey, he only gives money to police cars to protect white people in his neighborhood. I'm waiting for some of these black people, black people up here who are elected to dedicate police cars to black neighborhoods. I don't see that. I just see white people and Jewish people dedicating it to the white and Jewish neighborhoods. It's right in the agenda. Check it out. And this, number thirty-five, these are the maps. I tell you, always take a look at the maps. They'll make one little change there, and then all of a sudden, you'll see they're building a huge thirty-story building right next to you. That's what they did at the corner of Yucca and Argyle. Well, they changed one little thing so that they could build the most ugly hotel in the world. Take a look at it. Okay, now I'll go into my one minute.
Give him his one minute for general public comment.
Public comment. I liked how Bonin talked about his weakest, stupidest moment, most self-destructive moment was taking crystal meth. My weakest, stupidest, most self-destructive moment is coming up in front of you people and having, or reading the agenda. It's quite a mess. I'm telling you right now that we're going, that, Mr. Kukorian, I can hardly recognize him now. He's got so old. Take a look at these pictures of you that you flash up there. They all make you look twenty years younger. We're talking about a, what's happening now in Hollywood? Come to Hollywood, it's the filthiest it has ever been. It is filthy. When someone vomits on the Hollywood Walk of Fame, it improves it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Could you pull up Mr. Herman on the screen? And he has items one, B, one, C, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-five, general public comment.
Well, you can see the puppet doesn't want to speak, so I'll do the talking.
Now, in the nuisance abatement cost and the compliance of code fucking violations of annual fucked-up inspections by the City of Los Angeles, such inspection costs in pursuit to the fucked-up municipal code, L.A.M.C., for the record, of the Los Angeles Code of L.A.A.C., we go to Mr. Blumenfield in CD three, five, seven, one, one, north fucked-up street for a lien of four thousand dollars? Well, where's the fucking Jew to talk about the lien? Let's waive the lien, drop the interest, and I'm in opposition of this lien because Blumenfield's not there to push the fucking button on behalf of his constituents. That's item one, rookie. And then I go to the very back of this fucked-up agenda under the fucked-up terms of fucked-up item six, the bitch in CD six, and I'll pass. And then on thirty-seven, another CD six, bitch, I'll pass. Another item, under parking restrictions. Well, let me tell you about parking restrictions, niggas. We need parking for homeless people, niggas. Niggas got to sleep somewhere. There's no housing. And the nigger likes to sleep in his goddamn vehicle, RV or car, or, in my case, a fucked-up truck. So stop these parking restrictions. They're unconstitutional, and any person wanting to live and have to live in their vehicle without these fucked-up restrictions should live in the goddamn vehicle. You got it? Now I go into the last item, resolve pursuant Los Angeles. What fucking item is this? Oh, it looks like item thirty-eight, CD six. Where's that fat fucking helpless little bitch?
No, 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 no. You didn't sign, I don't have thirty-eight. You can go.
Oh, no, you're probably right. What was the last item you said?
No, no, no. You can go, it's your responsibility to keep up on your items. He can go to general public comment. Give him his one minute for general public comment.
Fuck LAPD. Fuck the fifteen-year-old girls that you fucking assholes allow to happen. Sexual harassment, Weisar, sexual harassment, Englander, and now we got cadets being fucked by LAPD police officers.
Well, no, sir. I want to drive a SUV and hold on to a vest to protect myself in case I'm trying to get fucked in the ass by my puppets. See? See? This is what they do to you when you're a kid. They take you.
But in consideration of all this, think about it. L.A. U.S.D. Martinez, and what else? Sexual harassment in L.A. U.S.D. So it's something common. Fuck you assholes for all these allegations of police brutality, abuse, and misconduct. Fuck you, Chief Johnny Beck, you only did it to save yourself.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Herman. Thank you. Okay, let's go to item thirty-six. Madam Clerk, I believe it's a two-vote item. So walk us through.
Item six, the first vote is whether to substitute.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate.
Eleven ayes.
Now, let's.
The next.
Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Herman, you're disrupting the meeting.
Eleven ayes.
Please, please do not do that. I just want to make sure the city attorney has that on the record. That brings, now, take, Mr. City, or let me say, Sergeants, again, we are being harassed, and the meeting is being disrupted by Mr. Herman. Now.
Mr. President, for the record, Mr. Herman is still disrupting the movie. He's continuing to shout.
Okay. No, he's stopping up. He should be ejected. That brings us to items, Mr. Kukorian, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want, for the sake of the record, Mr. Herman just left, has been disrupting the meeting until he exited, but just in case it wasn't on the audio, he did want to acknowledge that he was leaving of his own accord as well as he was disrupting the meeting, and he was not actually ejected, but he was continuing to disrupt even as he was going out.
Thank you for that clarification. Let's now vote on items one, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-five.
Mr. President, just for the record, item number one should be one, C, since item number B has a amending motion, so one, B should be voted on separately. So for the record.
Let's just vote on item one, then. Let's vote on item one. And what do you want to do, one, B and one, C separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's vote on item one, one, B. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Now, let's vote on item one, C. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote. Thank you. Now we'll go to items thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Counsel has motions for posting referral.
Do we have any general public comment remaining?
Yes, Mr. President, appears that there's general public.
Okay. So let me get Ms. Richardson, a Mr. Fred Potter, Norma Lopez, Anna Holt, please come forward. If I call your name, please come forward. Identify yourself.
Richardson.
Okay, go ahead.
The country of Russia and the United States is smarter than most people think they are. In the United States, they have watchmen who watch city council, the police department, they use ears to watch the police department, schools, libraries, anywhere where there's activity, they have watchmen twenty-four hours continually to see how they can best approach these entities if they need to. I know because when I was telling on the Russians, I would see them watching, and sometime when I was real mean to them, they would tell me, "You better leave here. It's wrong time for you to be here." They wouldn't say it, but they would let me know that it was time for me to leave. They were nice to me, even though I was telling on them, telling the city if I could, if they would listen what they were doing. They're intelligent people, and they're watching to make sure that they're okay in here. I told them on them as best I could, but sometime it was a difficult hearing.
Next speaker, please. Identify yourself.
Norma Lopez with Teamsters Local 952. This morning, we were here with port drivers, Joint Council Forty-two, representing over a hundred and fifty thousand Teamsters, particularly in the ports. We're here asking for this council to take action. What's happening at the ports is unacceptable. These port drivers are being taken advantage of every day, and so we're here today to make sure that this council takes action and helps these misclassified drivers get the decent wages and benefits that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have Mr. Potter, Fred, Fred Potter, or Eric, or Patrick Kelly?
Unfortunately, they all had to leave. They were on a bus and so.
Okay. Well, I'll just call the names anyway. Ernest Moore, Jean Claude, Anna Holt, Mike Hunt, Gary Kovacic. Please come forward, identify yourself.
I'm Ernest Moore.
Okay.
I believe, I believe I'm next.
Go ahead, Mr. Moore.
My name is Ernest L. Moore. I produce media for my Justice Channel, which is on blogspot.com and also on my Justice Channel YouTube channel. I live in Herb Weston's district. I serve on the Safety and Homeless Committees of the West Adams Neighborhood Council. I'm here today to request some emergency interventions by this council through law enforcement agencies. I'm a victim of the L.A. Superior Court Probate Department eleven. They have hijacked my mother's estate and continue to refuse to release my inheritance to me because of the many complaints that I have made against them to law enforcement. A few weeks ago, they forced me into an eviction from my apartment building that I lived in, and I am supposed to inherit. I actually beat the eviction at the trial because the documents that were filed against me by Attorney Stephen Seibig were fraudulent, but Judge Mark Bornstein issued eviction.
Thank you. So I need the next speaker, please come forward and identify yourself.
Gary Kovacic, Sullivan Workman &amp; D. Attorney for Mr. Richard Rutgard. Apparently, you've already made a decision on item number three, so I'll do this in general comments. I spent eighteen years on a city council and as mayor of a community just up the freeway, so I know that you are challenged by all kinds of important issues, long presentations, and you obviously have the time to deal with the important issues when you see fit. However, I find it in Congress that you would have an eminent domain issue, a constitutional issue involving eminent domain, and only give me one minute at last Friday's hearing to address the matter without any staff report, without any presentation, without any input from city attorney, so we're really dealing from the dark. And so I would encourage you, when you're dealing with constitutional issues that involve the Fifth Amendment, Article One, Section Nineteen of the California Constitution, the California eminent domain law, that you give representatives of property owners and former property owners of property taken by eminent domain.
Thank you.
More than one minute.
Thank you, sir. Paul Sock, Marlene Carberry, Mario Martinez, Andres Quan, it's either Mr. or Mrs. Caruso, Marcel Cote, Amina Quasi, Jose Rob Quan, Brenda Gutiérrez, Lucia Vargas, Vanessa De Did you fill out a card, ma'am?
Why didn't you call my name?
Well, if I called your name, come on. Just come and identify yourself.
My name is Lucille Caruso. Thank you very much for your time. I voted for Mr. Trump, and it bothers me sometimes when people go off on him like this. I was, I would just rather talk in person, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes general public comment. So again, back to you, Madam Clerk. We posted and referred, that should bring us to announcements. Announcements, members, announcements. I just want to take a moment to thank all of the city employees who came by for our staff appreciation lunch yesterday. It was a good time, was had by all. If all in council could rise now for adjourning motions, if we could please rise for adjourning motions. I'm going to look to my left side, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members. I asked today that we adjourn in the loving memory of Patricia Anne Earl, who died at the age of sixty-four this past Friday. Ms. Earl was born in Portsmouth, Virginia. She was the daughter of Jesse Robertson and Carlene Robertson. She married the love of her life, Mr. Larry Earl Senior, and they showed two children, Larry Earl Junior and Shante Earl, Ph.D. Patricia was educated in Portsmouth Public Schools and graduated from Key Business College, potential in business management. She went on to get her associate's degree in applied science management and then furthered her studies at Newport University. Her career was in the science and technology profession. She worked at NASA's Langley Research Center for more than thirty years. She was a dedicated employee and colleague. Her work included development and deployment of the Atmospheric Science Data Center's archived next generational, next generation system. She was an active member in her local church. Her work at her church, including leading around their work with the National Kidney Foundations and the National Heart Foundations. She was an active politically and active in civic life. She leaves behind her devoted husband and her son, Larry Earl Junior, who is the husband of our own Monique Earl of the Department of Transportation, as well as siblings and granddaughters and grandsons.
Thank you, Mr. Harris Dawson. So I continue to look to the left. I don't see any more. I look to my right. Any adjourning motions to my right? I don't see any. Members, this meeting is adjourned.